Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting in the Town of Clayton Planning Board to order. The time is 6:02 on Monday, July 28th, and we will start with staff conducting roll call, please.
Good evening, Board Planning Board. I'd start with Chair Dupree is excused and Board Member Anita Bland is also excused. So Vice Chair Derek Appelway.
Here.
Board Member Ronald Williams.
Here.
Board Member Daniel Gleason.
Here.
Board Member Mike Saraski.
Here.
Board Member Jason Carter.
Here.
Board Member Deborah Hooker. Board Member Mark Hall.
Here.
And Board Member Tom McKerny.
Here.
We do have a quorum, sir, and you will be acting as chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm Derek Appelway, Vice Chair, Acting Chair for the Town of Clayton Planning Board. The board is composed of volunteer members of the public who were appointed by the Clayton Town Council. The planning board is responsible for providing recommendations on conditional and conventional rezonings, street closures, tax amendments, and town plans. Note that any decisions here tonight are recommendations only. The Town Council is responsible for those final decisions. And we welcome public input and discussion, however we ask that when we do open up the public comment period, that you wait until you're recognized by the chair to move forward with your public comments and to address the board, not the applicant staff, but the board, please. And we'll have some other reminders once that public comment period opens up. At this time, I would ask everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a packed agenda this evening. It is my hope that we can move efficiently through these cases. I'll ask that town staff, the public, applicants, and the board be prepared for the cases as they come up. And as we will ask the public, if we've already heard the information through a presentation, we'll just ask that we hear it once. And the same thing with questions from the board. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is adjustments of the agenda. Are there any adjustments?
No adjustments to the agenda, sir.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the next item, approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes for the June 23rd, 2025 meeting by staff or by the board? Seeing none, I'll welcome a motion. Move to approve. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Saraski, a second by Board Member Hooker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Hearing none, the ayes have it and the motion carries. All right. All right, moving on to public meetings, we'll start out with the first case, 2025-10-CZM, Clayton Mixed Use Conditional Rezoning Type III. Mr. Conrad Almeida, Planning Director, is recognized.
Good evening, Planning Board. Conrad Almeida, Planning Director for the Town of Clayton, here to present to you a rezoning. The project is named Dominion Clayton Mixed Use Conditional Rezoning Project 2025-010-CZM. This is a request for a conditional rezoning from Corridor Commercial CRM to conditional mixed-use zoning. The property is just over eight acres in size. It's currently vacant and undeveloped. It is on the corner of Pritchard Road, Swan Trail, Waterfield Drive, and Collingsworth Drive. For clarification, it's not immediately adjacent to the, well, it's approximate to Athletic Club as well. Tax ID is 16I02046B, NC PIN 177000180722. This map here on the right shows the public notice sign that was provided for the public meeting. The map at the top there shows the current zoning, which is Corridor Commercial CRM. The proposed rezoning is CZC, I'm sorry, CZM. This is a big map here of the concept plan. The concept plan shows the multifamily two-story building with 167 units and a detached, let me see if this works here. There we go. This is the multifamily. This will be a senior living-focused housing. There is associated onsite improvements, parking, and a detached commercial multi-unit tenant building as well. The plan calls for, with the recent adoption of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Clayton on the Move, just recently approved by council, the change has been to have a mixed-use path, similar to what's found throughout the Riverwood neighborhood, coming down Swan Trail to Waterfield Drive, and then having a sidewalk go down Collingsworth. The adjacent property that is on the corner of Athletic Club and Pritchard is going to be aligning with those onsite, those improvements for pedestrian mobility as well. Here's a bit of some information about the concept plan. So the project is about eight acres in size, 167 units, senior living, multifamily use. And this is a condition on the project as well. There will be a 6,300 square foot commercial building on the site. So this intersection does have some substantial commercial development, so this will be in alignment with that, with that future use there, about 254 parking spaces. And with the on-street parking, 273 parking spaces will be provided. Open space is 11.5% or 40,000, just under a full acre of open space. There are three entry points planned with the right-in, right-out access on to, from Pritchard Road. So this will be a right-in, right-out only. Stormwater management area is also proposed as a detention pond. I'm just gonna point to that. Sorry if I keep on darkening the screen with a little point. I'm excited to get to use this again. The other buffers, there will be a type B buffer, which is an upgrade because it's including additional understory trees and 15 shrubs. So instead of a streetscape buffer, it will be a type B buffer along all street frontages. Here's a quick snip from the traffic assessment that was provided. So the project, the traffic engineers have provided these numbers through their analysis at 688 net new additional trips, 56 AM and 61 PM trips. These fall below the thresholds of the town's Unified Development Ordinance, as well as that of NC DOT, which would trigger a transportation impact analysis. And as indicated, it will be a right-in, right-out on Pritchard Road. In terms of consistency and compatibility, this is a, it should be a community center overlay and also a medium-density residential, a future land use map designation. So these, the density that is being proposed here does exceed that of the medium-density residential, which would be at three and a half units, three to five units per acre. The Town Council did approve last Monday a removal of the density caps for the project, for that zone district. So in a sense, there is no density restriction, and this project is aligning with that intent from council. Staff finds that while the future land use map has this as a medium-density residential, it would be inconsistent with that aspect of the future land use map, but we are nonetheless recommending approval. And if it was to be approved, we would have to amend the future land use map to align with the existing, with the zoning that was assigned. Moving on to the conditions of approval. The housing type, the site will be limited to senior age-restricted, affordable, income-based, multifamily housing. Provide a variety of housing types for the Town of Clayton. The density will be at 23.5 dwelling units per acre. While this exceeds, again, the future land use map of medium-density residential, we can find a future land use map designation that will be in alignment with that. Construction standards, the project will be certified Energy Star Multifamily New Construction Program. The project will provide additional open space than what would otherwise be required. Road improvements will be in accordance with the recently adopted Comp. Transportation Plan. The buffers will be increased to a type B buffer. The utilities, the applicant has committed to completion of a sewer study prior to approval of construction drawings. So this is to make sure that the sewer capacity will accommodate the project as it, at the time of construction drawings. Land use, applicant proposes only a certain amount of permitted land uses, and that's in the conditions of approval. And I've got, the next slides do show the conditions of approval that were in the staff report and the agenda packet. These conditions are our standard conditions. Condition number seven highlights the multifamily dwellings are permitted and shall be limited to age-restricted residential uses, which meet the Federal Fair Housing Act definition of housing for older persons. It discusses, condition eight touches on the density. Condition 11 discusses the open space. Condition 12 talks about the energy conservation. They are looking to provide some of the sustainability development practices that are in the UDO. Condition 13 has the list of uses that would be allowed. And this list is what was providing information for the traffic assessment that was provided. Some uses would trigger additional trips. So they have restricted to these types of uses. The list is continued here, and then 14, condition 14 is the traffic improvements. So you see 14A, B, C, and D. Don't have a star for 15, but this is just providing additional signage because of all the frontage, but to restrict that signage to not be internally illuminated along Swan Trail and Collingsworth. 16, condition 16 is with the completion of a sewer study. And condition 18 is to disarticling the, that star should be at the, I'm sorry, that talks about the streetscape buffer, is type B buffer. That's right. So that's the commitment to having a type B buffer in lieu of a streetscape buffer. Additional conditions is provided. So the consideration, should the rezoning be approved, the concept plan and the associated conditions of approval will run off the land in accordance with NC Statute Chapter 160D. And this planning board will make a recommendation to the Town Council. Staff is recommending that this project be approved with motion number two, approval inconsistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan. And that is highlighted here. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well. If you'd like staff to respond to some questions or we can also segue into the applicant's presentation, I'm happy to go with whatever you all think.
Any questions for staff? You're recognized.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, what's the justification for the streetscape type B buffer as opposed to C in the residential section?
That was, I want to say that's what staff had, staff and the applicants had both discussed that. And we felt that was a reasonable because of the amount of width that that would require and the impact of increasing that width onto the property. So the type B buffer was sought as an alternative to that.
Okay, so it's narrower in some way?
Yeah, so when with the 30-foot versus a 20-foot buffer, you're just gonna have less area in which to build upon. The streetscape buffer is less than that, so what we're, the kind of a compromise there, you'd have a type B buffer.
You're recognized.
Conrad, as far as the street parking goes, parallel parking, is that gonna be designated as for resident, the residents of this development, or is that gonna be general public parking for anybody in Riverwood?
At the time, that's going to not be, it's not going to be restricted in terms of who can park there or who cannot park there.
Okay, as far as like the street improvements on Pritchard Road, does DOT have any plans to improve Pritchard Road? Reason I'm asking is I've worked out there in Riverwood for a few years and I'm well aware of school taking in and school letting out and how chaotic Pritchard Road can be. Just the idea of presenting, and it's in the application narrative, that, you know, seniors would be walking back and forth across Pritchard Road to the shopping center, I find a little bit hard to believe just because of the nature of Pritchard Road right now. So I'm just curious, I know that they're proposing to do some street improvements, but aside from that, is DOT planning to do anything out there, or is it just going to be whatever improvements the developer makes?
So NC DOT was consulted with this project. They were part of that review of the traffic assessment. But in terms of the timing of any expansion or any projects, I'm unaware of that at the moment. We, the Comp. Transportation Plan has that as, it's a four, there will be four lanes of travel, so at some point that road, Pritchard Road, will be expanded on.
Mr. Carter. Conrad, can you speak to the sidewalks slash, in the site plan you put up a minute ago, what staff has talked about as far as the sidewalk, and I think there was mention of a bike path there with it as well, the white line surrounding the site?
So this, when this project came in, there was initial reaction, not reaction, but initial idea that put a sidewalk along Pritchard Road. So instead of the, with the adoption of the new Comp. Transportation Plan, it would be a multi-use path. And we're in reviewing of this, so you would have a multi-use path running down here. And in discussing with the applicants about having on-street like a bike share-o, the idea was to not have bike travel on the street, but to have it along the mixed-use path instead. So that's the intent of having those, the concept plan, show the mixed-use path along Pritchard Road, Swan Trail, and Waterfield. But then it, then it becomes a sidewalk along Collingsworth, and it will extend out to Athletic Club with the project on that corner as well.
Any further questions? Ms. Hooker?
I think part of the promotion of this project is that it's gonna offer seniors a kind of an ideal situation regarding transportation options. And I know that, and I know that Riverwood is one of the transit emphasis areas, but currently, obviously, there's no bus service out there. Is there any, is there any notion of when perhaps that is gonna be a development for that area?
That's a great question. Transit right now, we are gonna, the town is gonna be engaging soon. Let me back up. So we don't have transit service right now, but I don't wanna speak for the Johnston County area tran, what was it?
JCATs.
JCATs, JCATs, I forget what they stand for. Johnston County Area Transportation System. I've been working with Josh Jensen, the CTP-approved micro-transit study. So this area would be part of that features, a propensity study, a feasibility study of having micro-transit services in Clayton and the surrounding Johnston County areas. As it is right now, I don't, I don't believe there's any transit service, which is, I think, one of the reasons why we wanted to have so much non-motorized opportunity for this site and connecting it to the existing trail, you know, having it be as an option of connectivity for the trail system that's throughout Riverwood. And also, that's the future plans for a trail to go further up north on Pritchard.
Do you know when the study that you're talking about is gonna take place?
We are anticipating that study to take place in, hopefully in the fall and into next year.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions of staff? Hearing none, we can welcome up the applicant.
Thank you.
Can everyone hear me okay? Awesome. Alrighty, my name is Banks Collier, and I am a Development Associate representing the applicant tonight. Alongside me today, I also have Sean Reinhardt and Adria Hollis representing the development team, as well as Michael Barnes, Chris Bostick, and Kevin Dean representing the Civil Engineering Team, as well as Amy Kraut, who is our land use attorney on behalf of Smith &amp; Anderson. Before I get started, I just want to say thank you to the entire planning staff, to Conrad, Karen, Haley, the entire TRC staff. You guys have been awesome to work with. We've been working on this deal for two years now, so we're really excited to be here tonight to present this to you all. So before I jump into project specifics, I just want to give a little bit of context to who Dominion is. So we are an industry-leading private owner, developer, and manager of affordable multifamily housing across the nation. We provide housing to families and seniors, and we have over 50 years of experience. Currently, we own and operate roughly 220 communities across the country, and that provides nearly 40,000 homes to both families and seniors. We are a vertically integrated company, meaning we have construction and architecture teams serving in-house to provide quality control, as well as property management and site teams who oversee daily operations of all of our communities. One thing that I think makes us unique is that we are long-term owners and operators, so we are not your typical merchant developer looking to make a quick profit. We will not be constructing this community and then quickly turning around and selling it. We will be owning and managing this community for a minimum of 30 years. So we're here in the community for a long time, and that is a very important component to this community. So as Conrad mentioned, this project is located at the intersection of Pritchard Road and Swan Trail. The site consists of roughly 8.31 acres, and we are seeking a rezoning approval from conditional commercial to conditional mixed use. We are proposing 167 independent living apartment homes for seniors in the community, We are proposing 167 independent living apartment homes for seniors in the community, as well as roughly 6,500 square feet of commercial. I do want to mention, just to give folks a little bit of insight into the history of this project and this site, so back in 2008, there was a plan created for this parcel, which included a majority of commercial, as well as a small portion of senior independent living. After doing extensive market research and visiting the area, we feel the best use for this site is a large portion of residential and a lower amount of commercial, particularly when it comes to traffic considerations. So as I mentioned, we've been working over the last two years with staff and community members to develop a site that we think meets community needs. We spent a great deal of time at our expense to do so, which we're really thrilled about. And, you know, a lot of the things we've worked with to date aren't typical at this stage of the development. So as I mentioned, we are proposing 6,500 square feet of commercial space, as well as 167 apartment homes for seniors living in the community. The residential community will consist of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units within a single three-story conditioned corridor building consisting of elevators. These units will be income and rent restricted to seniors earning at or below 60% of the area median income. So really, the purpose of this community is to serve seniors that are already living in the community, many of which are on a fixed income and are really, you know, no longer want to or can take care of a single-family home, but also cannot afford, you know, all-inclusive retirement communities, as well as market rate alternatives. These are seniors who, you know, want to remain close to family and friends and age in place without, you know, having to worry about running out of money during retirement. As Conrad mentioned as well, there are a list of proposed uses for the commercial space. We do hope that this space will be used for more of a neighborhood commercial feel. So examples include a bakery, a market, a pharmacy, retail, office space as well. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our Land Use Attorney, Amy Kraut, to walk through the next set of slides.
Good evening, Amy Kraut. I'm an attorney at Smith &amp; Anderson. I just want to take you through, again, the concept plan and some of the design elements and conditions for this rezoning request. I want to emphasize something that Banks said, is this something that is that the developer's been working on for years? When they originally looked at this site, it was significantly denser with a taller building, less commercial, and to address community feedback and through lots of conversations with staff, this is what they've come up with, and they've done a lot of work to get here. So as Banks mentioned, it's two-building development. The multifamily building is really designed to accommodate that 55-plus population with a specific drop-off area in the front. Let's see if I can get the, yeah, there we go. With a specific drop-off area in the front right here. And it is a conditioned corridor elevator-style building, so really designed to meet the needs of this community. And then the 6,500-foot commercial building to the southeast. Couple things to note in particular, the buildings are positioned closer to Pritchard Road. That's really to minimize the impact on the surrounding residential area, and that's part of the reason for the reduced buffer. Open space requirements required by conditions is only 5%. Our open space is 11.5%. And the overall lot coverage, where the UDO would give us a maximum of 75% lot coverage, we are only at 21%. So really sensitive in placement of buildings and features on this site. In terms of parking spaces, we have limited it down to 246, but that is with a 15% reduction for sustainable development practices as allowed by the UDO. And we're adding an additional 27 parking spaces along Collinsworth Drive. So these are parallel parking spaces. That was something that we heard from the community, instead of a bike lane that would get really bad traffic along Collinsworth, to add a sidewalk and those parallel parking spaces to give additional parking spots. There are two EV charging stations and additional 10 bicycle spots as well. In terms of stormwater and sewer improvements, there will be a detention pond on the property. A lot of this is going to be hashed out at site plan and design stage, but we will fully comply with the requirements of the UDO. And we actually think, you know, right now, this is a vacant and treed lot with minimum, if no, stormwater measures on it. So when the rainwater falls, there's nothing to capture and disperse that water. So any improvement should help, if not, should maintain, if not increase, kind of maintenance of stormwater on this eight-acre parcel. Access and traffic improvements were something that they spent a lot of time on. Staff already went over it, but I just kind of want to highlight, and these are all in the conditions. So our developer is bound by these, and so the right, on Pritchard Road, there will be a right-in, right-out. That's going to be an access for apartment and commercial. The main residential entrance, though, will be on Collinsworth Drive, and there will be another along Swan Trail. For Pritchard Road, there will either be a 10-foot multi-use path or a combination of a 5-foot path and a 5-foot bicycle lane. For Collinsworth, there will be improvements to the driveline done, parallel parking, again, those 27 spaces, a 5-foot sidewalk, and all green spaces will be in the right-of-way. And on Swan Trail, Waterfield Drive, again, they're doing improvements to the driveline, another 10-foot multi-use path, or the combination 5-foot path and 5-foot bike lane. They're also adding curb and gutter along Swan Trail and Waterfield, and all green spaces will be in the right-of-way. As you can see, there are a lot of intentional improvements to this site, not just improvements to the building, but also to the infrastructure that we have heard, you know, concerns about. So quite intentional and in-depth improvements being made. To give you an idea of what this would look like, the next two slides are kind of examples of other Dominion projects. Dominion spends a lot of time and resources on design and thinking about residents' experiences. So this is kind of the exterior building and exterior amenities. You have a lot of open space, a lot of green areas, outdoor grilling areas within the units. Residents will have a fully-equipped kitchen with stainless-steel appliances, movable kitchen islands, spacious bathrooms, bedrooms, balconies, patios. There will be a business center, a fitness center, a movie theater. So a lot of people, when they think about affordable housing, you know, this is going above and beyond for, for those residents, and very intentional in their design. In terms of actual project renderings, what this specific site could look like, this is an example of what it would look like from Collinsworth Drive. Just an example, again, three-story apartment building, the ground sign and the parking along it. You can also see the parallel parking added along Collinsworth. And then this is the example, just a little bit further south, of the multifamily building next to that commercial building. The conditions for approval, we acknowledge that there are many in this, and that's just really, again, due to the time and resources that we've dedicated to the project over the past couple of years, and a lot of them go above and beyond. Just want to highlight a couple, but we're happy to answer any questions you have about them. For commercial uses, we've really restricted down the uses in the CZC district. That's to kind of maximize flexibility and marketability for development, again, targeting that kind of mixed-use unified feel, but limit the overall trips generated. If it was a full commercial space, the traffic impact analysis has a lot more traffic and trips there. Design improvements, again, we go above and beyond on that active space, go above and beyond on architectural elements. The UDO requires three, we've committed to doing four. It will be an Energy Star-rated property. And the ground signage, there'll be a ground sign on each entrance, but we've made sure on those two kind of more residential sides, they won't be internally illuminated. All those traffic improvements I just discussed are also conditioned, and there are some design modifications that are, again, to improve, to improve the parking and sustainability incentives, the density. And as Taff mentioned, just wanted to touch on this, for the existing zoning district and the proposed zoning district, Town Council just removed the cap on residential density limits. So in the CRM district, it used to be six units, there is no max anymore. So the density restriction here in the conditions is 23.5 units an acre, so we are now limiting that down. Perimeter and streetscape buffers, again, designed to push the property over to Pritchard Road and really kind of reduce impact to the surrounding communities. And the building entrances and refuse collections, a lot of those are just based on the shape and size of the site. We have frontages on three streets, but everything will be buffered and landscaped and screened. Want to talk quickly about current zoning and surrounding uses. I think one of the things that Banks mentioned is this property is currently zoned CRM. Under current zoning, they could have submit a site plan that would be much more intense than what this conditional zoning is proposing. There's also kind of support for this zoning in this district. You have multi-use near it, you have a big commercial development of 14,000 square feet coming just directly south of the site that's taking up that Collinsworth Athletic Club Boulevard and Pritchard Road bottom corner. Last thing I briefly want to touch on is just comprehensive plan and future land map consistency. Again, this is medium density residential with the neighborhood center overlay. This does consider and take into account higher-density residential, such as apartments located in close proximity to shopping and service destinations. That's really what's happening on this site. It's really getting activated with the development to the south and the commercial development within this proposed rezoning, really activating it and creating a walkable area for the community. Given the conditions, concept plan, and care taken to ensure high-quality design, we do believe this project is overall consistent with the comprehensive plan. We recognize the density limitations, but given everything else, the open space, the goals of preserving Clayton's character while allowing growth, that focus on high-quality design with open space, appropriate screening and buffering, all that we've taken into account in our zoning conditions, and really goal three, which is to encourage a range of housing types that meet various income levels and ages. You know, Dominion did market studies, and the need for affordable housing, senior living is, is present, and this gives them that. And we just, again, want to note that Taff does recommend approval of the request. With that, I'm going to flip it back to Banks just to quickly address neighbor concerns, and that will conclude our presentation.
Alrighty, so I am going to keep this brief as I feel that Amy covered a lot, a lot of these items, but just super quickly. So parking, you know, with over 50 years of experience, we have a lot of insight as to how seniors operate when it comes to parking on our sites. You know, our goal is to ensure that we do not provide a sea of parking and a bunch of asphalt. We want to find that optimal ratio. So that consideration has been prevalent in the current design you guys have seen today. In addition, as Amy mentioned, perimeter setbacks were reduced from 30 feet to 20 feet to ensure that the multifamily building could be pushed closer to Pritchard and away from neighboring single-family homes. In addition, we will be providing a type C buffer in terms of streetscape buffering and landscaping. This will include two under-story trees and two canopy trees. In addition, we do anticipate adding shrubbery around the perimeter of the site as well. As Amy mentioned, density, Town Council did make some recent changes to density provisions within the UDO. You know, really, our intent here is to ensure that we're finding that optimal density to ensure that we can reduce height, reduce max, reduce the building footprint, as well as maximizing the space for amenities. And then finally, traffic, we understand this has been a big consideration from community members. Traffic has been a large focus of our design for this project. We took the liberty of compiling drone footage of Collinsworth. Our understanding is that Collinsworth is currently used to accommodate pickups and drop-offs by families and students attending the local schools. That is why we have decided to add parallel parking along the entirety of Collinsworth to accommodate that parking and ensure that we are protecting both residents as well as families in the community. We will be adding sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and curb and gutter to Waterfield and Swan Trail. We also will be adding curb and gutter and sidewalks to Collinsworth as well. And then in addition, we will be adding a multi-use path along Pritchard Road to accommodate the future right-of-way expansion, as well as the right-in, right-out off of Pritchard Road to help facilitate traffic and cut through. So that concludes our presentation. We appreciate you all taking the time to be here tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Gleason?
I have a question, probably more geared toward the design team, actually. But for the right-in, right-out at Pritchard, because Pritchard's not already a divided facility, my worry would be that the right-in, right-out would not actually constitute anyone trying to turn left. I know we can't always accommodate that, but would you, as the applicant, be open to some minor roadway revisions to add at least a minimum of a 2-foot median there to prevent people from turning left out as well?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So we will be providing a median, I believe it actually is 2 feet, as well as a 100-foot taper leading to that right-in, right-out. So we absolutely want to prevent folks from trying to take a left.
Just to clarify, not, not a island to force people to go right, but a median in the middle of the road to prevent them from going right and then trying to turn left, because it happens all the time. And I guess there I see a representative from our police department and fire. In my experience living in Clayton, that happens quite often, and I imagine you guys would have some comments about that as well, so for future consideration, but I just wanted to run it by first.
Yeah, no, that's, that's really helpful feedback, and certainly something we can discuss with NC DOT.
Mr. McCarty?
Yeah, I've got a question, just to make sure. This is considered an independent living facility with no medical on-site, so it's not assisted living?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, Ms. Hooper?
Yeah, thank you for, for designing, for using the sustainability options in your design. The Energy Star designation, isn't that something you have to apply for every year?
Um, I believe so. I am not super versed on a lot of that stuff, but I believe that is the case. We definitely will need to apply and have approval for that before we're issued our COs, as outlined in the conditions of approval. But I do know it is something that we have to submit information for, obtain sign-off, and is something that is checked
Right.
pretty often, so.
Right. And, and you may not know the answer to this next question, too, but since this is a facility that is accommodating lower-income seniors, I was just wondering, how are the rent increases managed?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So just expanding on that, too, just to give some more context. So like I said, this will be income and rent restricted to seniors earning at or below 60% of the area median income. For seniors specifically, they are able to use additional assets to count towards those income and rent levels, so that includes selling a home, a retirement fund, savings account, things of that nature. Rents and income limits are out of our control, those are set by state and federal housing agencies every single year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Quickly, and it may have been in the application information, but are you pursuing cross-access agreements with the adjacent commercial property?
Yes, we will need to work through those, yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. At full occupancy, what is expected to be the, the population of the?
Yeah, so for our senior communities, I would say most of the time, it really is Yeah, so for our senior communities, I would say most of the time it really is one individual in these, in these units. Obviously, we'll have one in two bedrooms here, so you know, your one bedrooms are usually going to be one person. We do have couples that, you know, occupy the two-bedroom units as well, so 167 units, if we could do the math, which I'm not good at doing on the fly. We have 92 one-bedrooms, so 92, then you have 75, so probably no more than 300 people.
Okay. You mentioned the fact that you manage 220-plus communities and you focused on the number of housing units. Do you also deal with commercial space like this? And is the intent, you had also mentioned that the intent is to own and operate for a minimum of 30 years. Does that include the commercial space?
Yeah, so we are multifamily developers. That's our bread and butter, but we are working hand-in-hand with the developer who will pursue the commercial component as well. So we ourselves will not be managing or developing that commercial space, but we are coordinating with them as well to ensure that this is kind of one cohesive project.
Okay. And I have one last one specific to the site plan. Along Collinsworth Drive, I saw the cross-section for how you intend for the road to be, and it appears that there's some bumpouts in there. Is that, is that intended to be some type of calming, I guess, for traffic, for lack of another term? Is it, will it accommodate two cars going through those bumpouts?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, can you clarify which street you were talking about?
On Collinsworth?
Got it. So you're just asking how we'll accommodate people coming in and out of the site?
If you, if you can pull up the site plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's kind of hard to see, but on the, what would be either the north or the east side of Collinsworth where your property is located, I can see kind of between the on-street parking, there are some bumpouts there.
Oh, I, I see what you're talking about.
And between that bumpout and the other side of the road, is it intended for there to be either emergency vehicle access and/or two vehicles to be able to pass each other where those bumpouts are?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, that is correct, that we will need to make sure that emergency vehicles have full access to our site, so we will be sure to meet whatever requirements those may be in accommodating those vehicles.
But it, it's not intended to accommodate just one-way traffic?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Mr. Scharaski?
So you, you answered the question I had about care. There's no way in the future this is going to be any assisted care. This is strictly independent.
Nope, we're bound by our land use restriction agreement, so we couldn't do it even if we wanted to.
Got it, okay. And if, you, you guys run a lot of facilities like this all across the country, do these types of facilities with this range of units have this much parking typically, or is it less than this? Or is it, is this pretty on average?
Yeah, so we run, we've run a national study for our entire portfolio in looking at optimal parking ratios. Within the southeast, that ratio is 1.25 spaces per unit for a senior community. This project is at 1.37, so we're above that.
Okay. I, I see in the conditions that it's age-restricted. Would you all be willing to put a number, an age number in there for the restriction?
Fifty-five and up.
So I didn't see that in the conditions. Would you all be willing to include that in the conditions, or is it in there?
So that will be a part of our land use restriction agreement as a part of the financing, so that will be bound to this site.
Okay. And are there any conditions in there for visitors or other in-living relatives or anything like that for people that may not be of that age?
Yeah, so that'll be in lease agreements. So within our communities, you know, the head of household, whoever's name is on the lease, has to be 55 and up. Of course, there are some individuals that might have spouses younger than them, so we limit that to 40 years of age. But yes, that is something that's part of their lease agreements and something we manage very closely.
What, what about relatives? I mean, other relatives, children, and things like that, would they be, or are they just only visitors, guests, that sort of thing?
They are allowed to visit the site for up to two weeks, once per year.
Would you all, I know there was a lot of questions or concern about crossing Pritchard, and I know there's a crosswalk on one side of the intersection, and I see the site plan that's being attached to this. Is there no plan for another crosswalk on this side of Athletic Club Drive over to the other side? It doesn't look like there is, is that correct, staff? I'm kind, sorry, I'm kind of looking at you guys to answer that question.
Are we talking about the crosswalk? I'm sorry, can you, can you, me on, or which crosswalk are you talking about?
So there is a current crosswalk out there right now that's in front of the school over to the shopping center. There's no crosswalk on the other side of Cross-Pritchard, correct? Would you all be willing to condition that crosswalk as part of this and connect to, and build a, a ramp on the other side as well within the right-of-way?
Yeah, I, I think that's something we can definitely take into consideration. Of course, that is a little bit beyond our site, so that would have to do with the commercial developers next door to us, but it's certainly something we can look at.
I, I think it would be good as a community, you might say something wrong here.
No, I, I'm, I'm understanding, I'm just wondering of how N C D O T, you'd have to coordinate with N C D.
Absolutely. But there's a concern about senior citizens crossing Pritchard, which I already heard from multiple people. We need to give, let's see a way we can give them more crossings of Pritchard, more safe crossings of Pritchard instead of one, because right now there's no way to get to that crossing from this site.
Well, the way they would cross right now, I'm not, crossing Athletic Club Boulevard, they could cross Athletic Club Boulevard and then cross Pritchard.
But there's no crosswalk across Athletic Club Boulevard.
There is not a crosswalk, okay.
That's what I'm saying, that right now, in the current condition, whether that site on the corner comes in or not, there is no way for seniors on this site to get to the shopping center safely on a sidewalk and across. So that's why I'm saying, is there a way that we could condition that as part of this site? I understand there's another site there, I get it, I absolutely get that. But I just think for the safety purposes, I think it'd be good to, to, to be able to do that.
I will say the developer does have a ramp there on their site. It's just not on the other side that there isn't a ramp.
Understood.
Yeah, if you look close enough, that the new other developer has a ramp that they're putting in, but there just won't be any paid.
There's, there's a ramp, but no crossing.
Hey, Kevin Dean, Kinley Horn, 1070 South Main Street in Holly Springs. There actually is a crosswalk striped on the southwest side of Athletic Club Boulevard from Collinsworth. So there's not an ADA landing on kind of the northwest, I don't know.
The northwest corner.
But there is a striped crosswalk of Athletic Club Boulevard past the school entrance right at the intersection. So I think by the time our project combines with the retail site to the south of us, that'll complete a sidewalk connection all the way to Athletic Club Boulevard, which will give folks an option to cross Athletic Club and get to the multi-use path on the south side and then get across Pritchard at the same. So I think there's already a way to do that once our sidewalk connections are in. I don't think with that not being our corner, signal poles being in the way, I'm not sure we can commit at this time to a specific design for them.
I just, I just think that should be a consideration. The more crosswalks, the better.
Sure.
One at that intersection is not enough to cross Pritchard. That's just my point. That's why I wanted to bring that up. And then the last, last question I have is, and you, you all not going to be able to answer this, but I just want to throw this out there. Is there a plan to, to redo the Riverwood Elementary and Middle Schools property by the county? Do you know if that's, if that's in the plan right now in the county's?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it seems to me that their, the school system probably needs to make some improvements there, especially onsite drop-off and pickup. Because it was built so long ago, people didn't drop off their kids or pick up their kids back when these schools were built. I mean, my kid's five-years-old, my, my stepdaughter would walk to school in Riverwood, so there was no drop-off, pick-off back, pickup back then. So it wasn't built for the amount of cars that are going in and out of it. Is there, is there an opportunity, I mean, is, is this something Johnston County is looking at to improve? And then again, if no one can answer that question now, that's perfectly fine, I just wanted to bring that up.
So we, the town has been working with the Johnston County Public School System for some sites, Cooper Elementary and Clayton High School, Clayton Middle School, but not to my awareness have we discussed, we have not discussed Riverwood at this time, the elementary and the middle school there.
Any further questions? I, I do have one question. Can you speak to the financing of the project? Are you all using Lytech?
Yep, so this project will be financed with low-income housing tax credits paired with tax-exempt bonds as well as your traditional construction and permanent financing. So really those, those tax credits allow us to subsidize our development costs through tax incentives, and then we can further reduce rents, so.
And, and I, I think that's an important point too, that in order to keep this an affordable project for many years to come, that you are leveraging tools available by the federal government to, to do just that, which I think is important. You know, the parking is, you know, something that we continuously hear about when cases come before the planning board, and I know that here, I think there is probably sufficient parking if you include all the parking on the site and the parallel spots. With the commercial space, so that the commercial building and the parking associated with that, if visitors or residents park in that space, are they liable to get towed by whoever is leasing that property or the tow company?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, and honestly, something we'll need to negotiate through our cross-access agreements and everything. But, you know, we're going to have visitor spaces designated at the residential community as well. And like I mentioned, we, this project is overpart from our internal studies at 1.37 versus the 1.25, so I don't foresee that being an issue. But to your point, you know, it is something that we'll need to review as part of those agreements.
Okay. One other question for, for Waterfield and Swan Trail, curb and gutter on both sides of the road for that, can you, I mean, and it may be a little premature speaking as to construction and how it might, you know, make challenges for folks that live out there. Could y'all speak to any of the processes y'all go through in notifying neighbors when construction is happening and how you communicate with the, the neighbors around?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a joint venture agreement with Weiss. They are a very well-respected contractor that works in multifamily, so we'll be working really closely with them throughout the entirety of the construction process, and we do notify residents. We also implement a handful of mitigating efforts as a part of construction as well. So, you know, parking, for example, construction services will, you know, not be allowed to park unless they're on-site or they've been previously authorized to park elsewhere. Access will be key, so, you know, we'll be directing access off of Pritchard Road to prevent, you know, construction equipment and vehicles going through the neighborhood. We'll be coordinating with the school as well to ensure that we're, you know, limiting deliveries during, you know, non-school release times. We do dust control as well. Oh, and then fencing, so we will be fencing the entire, the entire perimeter of the site as well as silt fencing to prevent any sort of runoff as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hooker?
I noticed on the concept plan in the parking area, you had indicated two spaces for either an L1 or an L2 EV charger. Could you commit to L2s because L1s are pretty useless?
Yeah, we can definitely look at that for sure, so.
Good.
Any further questions for the applicant? Signon, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to move into public comment on this project for our consideration. Can you, can you give a show of hands if you plan on speaking on this project? Okay, that is perfectly fine. For public comment this evening, you will have three minutes to speak. You'll need, state your name and your address before the board, and please direct your comments toward the board, not toward the applicant or to town staff, but to the board directly. We also ask that this is a public meeting, that we limit outbursts, cheers, jeers, clapping or booing, and just keep your, your comments for the board themselves. Also, just one other item, if your comments are repetitive, we may ask you to, to get to a unique point. So if there's a group of you that are representing the same interest, maybe you can appoint one person to speak on your behalf for consideration of the board this evening. At this time, we'll allow the first person to come up and speak. Again, state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes, and we will cut you off after three minutes, and staff will do that for me. So we'll welcome up whoever would like to speak first.
I have my timer and make sure that this is accommodating to my five-foot stature. Hi, my name is Lindsay Logan Allen. My address is 292 Stansbury Lane, Clayton, North Carolina, 27527. Anything before I start? I'm gonna start my timer. My name is Lindsay Logan Allen, and I am a nationally sought-after and recognized expert in public health and health equity. I am a homeowner in Riverwood. I'm a mother, I'm a former AmeriCorps service member, and the spouse of a public school teacher at Riverwood Elementary. I've built my career around supporting people who are often left out of these systems and decisions like this one, and I care deeply about how we grow as a community, both responsibly and equity. Let me be clear, I support affordable housing. That is the bread and butter of the work that I do. But what's being proposed here does not address the root cause of the housing crisis. It is not responsible, safe, and it is not aligned with the real needs of our community seniors. In my daily work, I see firsthand what our aging rural North Carolina population looks like. Most low-income seniors do not drive. In fact, 32% of seniors show up without a caregiver that have a car that they can independently drive on their own. Most low-income seniors rely on caregivers, public services, or walk because for them there's no other option. They are more likely to be on government assistance, need access to food banks, and use local transportation systems if they exist. In this case, they certainly don't. This development is being placed in an amenities desert with no senior center, no EMS, a hospital 20 minutes away, and no reliable transit access. And while it's technically true that there's a grocery store and pharmacy across that street, as we have said several times, that is a high-speed, high-traffic corridor. There's no safe pedestrian crossings at this time. And we've already seen the consequences. Our 91-year-old neighbor was killed and hit in October of 2024, and shortly afterwards, a child 12-years-old was hit in that same area. And now we're proposing to add an additional 167 vulnerable seniors into that exact environment with no new safety measures or infrastructure. The walking path on Pritchard is unfathomable. Just look at the mismatched fences along Pritchard, those were car hits. This is predatory. It checks the box of affordable housing while bypassing the actual work of building supportive livable environments. It profitizes, prioritizes profit while the town and the neighbors shoulder the long-term cost. The lawsuits against Dominion can better speak to that, I can't. It also directly contradicts the goals of Clayton's 2024 Comprehensive Plan, which outlines a future vision based on inclusive, connected, and sustained growth. If this were the kind of project we approved, we're not following that a plan, we're abandoning our responsibility. As citizens, we're held accountable for our choices, for how we build, how we maintain, how we support our community. Developers must be held to the same standard. And I'll close with this, when we make decisions for seniors, decisions that will shape the final years and chapters of their life, we have to do better than this. This development may meet the minimum standard on paper, but when we look at the actual dangerous conditions that exist in our neighborhood, the isolation and lack of access, it becomes clear this is not housing, it is harm. And no one in this room would accept that for their parents or their grandparents, and I'm simply asking that we not accept it for anyone else's either. Thank you.
Please, please, we're going to limit applause, please. Thank you. The next speaker can come forward. Please, your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I am Becky Williams. My address is 100 O A Drive, Clayton, NC, in Riverwood. I probably won't take three minutes because Lindsay covered a lot of the things I'm concerned about. I'd also like to talk about the Lytech tax credits that will be used. I feel like Dominion is selling itself as someone who's committed to affordable housing, but what they miss saying is it takes at least 15 years to realize the benefit of those tax credits. So while they own it long-term, I don't know that it's a commitment to affordable housing or if it's more to just make the money and meet the tax credits because that period is required. They state that they manage properties well. The question you asked about visitors being there, or would people under that age be allowed to live there, was something that I actually asked on the call in January. The answer was we manage this with our leases. When I did some research on Dominion, a lot of the complaints are maintenance not being managed, unquestionable clauses in the lease, people don't understand the leases they're signing. So I'm worried that while they feel they manage it, it's not being managed to the extent that would need to be managed. The other thing I'd like to mention is in Riverwood, as we've seen growth over the past several years, we've also seen increased crime that's caused a burden on our law enforcement, on our fire services, the emergency services, and we don't have the infrastructure for this development, especially in Riverwood right now. So that is all I have to say about it. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I just don't think this is the best thing for our neighborhood at this time.
Just your name and address.
My name is Adam Frank. Address is 101 Singletary Court in Clayton, North Carolina. Two years ago, this very town adopted a 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. It promised medium-density residential, 40. It promised medium-density residential, four to eight homes per acre for this site. Tonight, the applicant asks you to triple that pledge to 23 units per acre. If the board tears its own map in half after only 24 months, what message does that send to every other neighborhood that trusted your plan? A 356-foot building where the limit is 250. Setbacks shaved from 30 feet to 20. Buffers downgraded, patios deleted, parking discounted. Individually, they sound small. Together, they bleed the ordinance drive. Grant them all, and tomorrow's developers will arrive with this case stapled to their application saying, "You gave it to them, why not us?" Picture is seen, October 15th, 2024. Schools opening, bells ring, cars lined an inch forward. 91-year-old grandmother, known as our neighborhood Nona, steps into the crosswalk and is struck. She never comes home. Now add 92 more rush hour trips, nearly eight cars shy of the town's own trigger for a full traffic impact analysis. The developer calls that, quote, "insignificant." Ask yourself, would eight more cars have saved her life or claimed it sooner? Condition 16 literally says the stewardry can be done, quote, "later," and if costly upgrades are found, the developer may request off-site improvements. Translation: Dear taxpayer, please swipe your card. Stormwater design, also later. In Clayton, we build the cart after the horse, but only if you let us. So if denial feels impossible, then you must buy in this project with ironclad conditions. You need to cut the unit count to a number the plan can live with. You need to demand a full traffic impact analysis now, not in some hopeful future. You need to complete the study, the sewer study, before the first shovel hits dirt and escrow every dollar of the developer's share. We need to require sidewalks, curb ramps, and signalized crossing before the first senior moves in. Anything less is an IOU paid in risk, and the interest is measured in human life. Members of the board, your vote tonight will echo for decades. Will it say that Clayton keeps its promises, safeguards its elders, and pays its own bills? Or will it say that promises are optional, safety is negotiable, and the bill can be mailed in the future? I respectfully urge you to recommend denial, or the very least continue this case until every study is complete, every upgrade is funded, and every senior who steps into that crosswalk can do so without fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Chafin Allen. I live at 292 Stansbury Lane, Clayton, 27527. Good evening. I'm Chafin Allen. I'm a homeowner in Riverwood with my wife and our two children who attend Riverwood Elementary. I was recently hired on at Riverwood Elementary to become their new teacher. Every single day, I teach children what it means to be a good neighbor, a responsible citizen, and someone who contributes to their community with integrity. And so tonight, I'm standing here not just as a resident, but as someone who invested in what kind of, who has invested in what kind of examples we set because I believe that developers should be held to the same standard as we teach our children, to act with care, to take responsibility for their choices, and to think about the impact their decisions have on others. This proposal falls short of that. I know it's being pitched as a solution for affordable senior housing, but placing 167 low-income seniors into a location with no nearby services, no transit, no hospital, and no safe pedestrian infrastructure is not a solution. It's a shortcut, and it's a dangerous one. Yes, there's a grocery store and pharmacy across the street. Again, that street is Smithfield, who we've said and seen multiple times is not a safe place for people to cross. We've seen the devastating consequences. And now we're considering adding even more seniors to this area, many of whom statistically do not drive and rely on caregivers into the same zone. That's not thoughtful planning. It's harm disguised as housing. This proposal contradicts the vision laid out in our 2045 Comprehension Plan, which calls for inclusive, connected growth that puts people first. This development does not put people first. It puts profit first and leaves the town and community carry the long-term cost. As a teacher, I'm expected to be accountable for how I show up to my students every day and our community. I'm simply asking that developers be asked to do the same. We want our town to grow, but growth without the right infrastructure is not success. It's sprawl, and when it's done at the expense of seniors, it's a failure of compassion and responsibility. We are also seeing a pattern in Clayton that deserves naming corporate developers are advancing large-scale products that do not deliver the services or support our community actually needs. Two of the three commercial spaces across the street have been vacant for over a year already. A nearby senior housing community remains unsold, yet here we are being asked to approve another 6,400-plus square foot of undefined retail space without a plan for access, occupancy, or actual service delivery. This is not mixed-use. This is a facade designed to check a planning box and maximize profit margins, not to strengthen our local economy or meet residents' needs. It's a small, it's small businesses, not corporate developers, that give a town its character, stability, and service ecosystem, but we see no efforts in this proposal or the town's oversight of previous ones to ensure that small community-serving businesses can survive here, let alone thrive. The people most affected by this development, low-income seniors, schoolchildren, working families, deserve better than incomplete promises and wishful thinking. Please don't approve this plan that sets people up to struggle just because it checks a box. We deserve better, and our seniors do too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ed Palmetiere, and I live at 124 Elway Drive, about seven houses away if you're looking at the picture. I just had a few things to comment on. One, the parking that they talked about on Collinsworth, I think it's a good idea, but I think it should be a one-way street going away from the schools instead of having traffic both ways. I have kids, my son is going to a Riverwood Middle School, and when the kids walk, it's really congested. The drone picture showed, gave you an idea of all the cars that are gonna park there anyway. So if they're gonna park there anyway, I think a recommendation would be to have it go a one-way street. I don't know if this is the right forum to suggest that, but take that into consideration. Another thing, a couple of things that were mentioned, I think Mrs. Hooker asked about the Energy Star certification. The question should be asked, what Energy Star certification? Because there's different tiers, and if you don't know the right questions to ask, then, you know, you could get the lowest, and it's not as efficient as it could be in the plan. So kind of ask for specifics there. Also, when you ask about looking into the different chargers, Level 1, Level 2, I think the question should be, will you commit to a Level 2 charger versus, because they could just say, yeah, we looked at it and we decided not to do that. So you might want to be a little more specific there. The comment about water dispersal by the lady was not correct, and it was a little misleading. The best water disposal is actually trees and growth and natural things, not paved over spaces and roofs. You actually, it's better to absorb the water into the ground with the plants and things like that. Elway floods right now. When it rains, it floods right across my street, and I'm sure you've seen the news. It's dangerous to walk across, or not walk, but drive across roads that are flooded. Elway floods right now. I don't think that's enough overflow. What's gonna happen is that overflow is gonna go behind our houses, and it's gonna flood on Elway in front of our houses and behind Elway with the overflow. Another thing to consider is how they laid out the, the buildings. If you look right now, the sun is right here, and it's, it would bake, it would make all the pavement super hot. If the buildings were pulled south, or actually this direction towards where the sun is, there would be shadows that would shade the parking lot structure, making the whole structure cooler. It's called the heat island effect. I don't know if anyone's aware of that. It's where you have a bunch of, like, pavement around an area, and the sun bakes it, and then when the sun goes down, it radiates the heat. But if they, is that my time?
Yeah, time's expired. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Shirley Brett. I live at 90 Snowy Orchid Lane, and I live in Smithfield, but I work in Clayton. I'm a Realtor. So one of our things that we make sure that we do is we comply with fair housing. You're saying that this is a 55 and over, and it may be, but you know, 55 and over come in all sizes and all. We're not all looking for something that is living like an assistant living, because that's the way this is living. You're saying, though, it's not, but for somebody like myself, who is over the, over 55, and if I'm, if I don't work, I am one of those low-income. I don't want to live in a place like this. You have, even if I, you wanted to have people who live here, you're not giving them the accesses of things that they need. They may not have to go to the hospital, but maybe they have to go to an urgent care. You don't even have one here. You don't have anything for them if they want to go into another store. Say they want to go to a different grocery store. They don't want to go to Food Lion, and they don't want to walk. You're giving them nothing to access. And you're also telling us that in 30, this is only for 30 years, well, what happens after 30 years? We, I have clients coming from all over the place in different states because their families live here. This is not what they're, if I give them an, you know, offer them 55 and over, and I am looking for a 55 and over, we're a client coming from another state. This is not what she's looking for. Absolutely not. And we don't have to have something like Del Webb, which is very, very expensive, or the Walk, which is really expensive, but there's gotta be something better than this. And you're only offering them apartments. There are people who don't want to live in apartments. They did it when they were young. They don't want to do it now. And I just hope that you all think about that, because I know there's got to be people on the board and in your community that you know who are over the age of 55, and they are on a low income, and they don't want to live there. And we need to think about that before we approve something for places, and you're just putting them in places because it'll make you feel better. And that's not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kenneth Wagner. I live at 112 Elway Drive, four houses in from Swan Trail. I'm a retired New York City police officer. My primary assignment was traffic control and assessment. Since my time here, I've lived here since 2018. I've seen a marked increase on traffic on Pritchard Road due to developments down at Flowers Plantation along Covet Bridge and Buffalo Road. These developments are ongoing and moving ahead at a breakneck speed. My assessment, have looking, looking at Pritchard Road is that the intersection at Athletic Club Boulevard and Pritchard Road is a limited sight distance either direction on Pritchard Road. Coming north, there's a hill. Coming south is the bend. Both sight distances are under 300 feet to the intersection. Likewise, at Swan Trail and Pritchard Road, there's an S-bend with about 300 feet, maybe a little bit less than that, again, of sight distance, which is extremely hazardous. The plan here shows right-in, right-out onto Pritchard Road. However, anybody who wishes to head north on Pritchard Road from this development would be forced to either turn right on Athletic Club Boulevard during hours of pickup and drop-off for the school, going down to the roundabout, then back up to the traffic light, which puts him in the heart of the pickup and drop-off traffic, which is exacerbated by inclement weather. Otherwise, they have to make a right turn on Collinsworth, right on Waterfield, and right on Swan Trail, where there is no traffic control except for a stop sign to make the left to travel north on Pritchard Road. And with the limited sight distance and the additional traffic, it is a very hazardous condition. And as has been stated with the pedestrians being struck, these are conditions are out of Dominion's control to address. They require DOT, but even with the traffic light, the limited sight distance can still present a serious problem with additional traffic. I don't know how to address that, but this is not going to be safe for any pedestrians, no matter what crosswork, crosswalk additions you add at Athletic Club Boulevard and Pritchard Road. Doesn't change the fact that once they widen Pritchard Road, it's gonna take that much longer to get across. I personally have crossed there and had several close calls with traffic as they are not looking pedestrians, especially elderly. I'm 62-years-old. It's just creating unnecessary risk for these people, and it's something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jennifer Montalvo. I live at 128 Marino Place in Clayton. I'm an owner in Riverwood with my husband and two kids. I'm very worried. My son was walking to the middle school. He's going into the high school this year, but I'm very worried about these precious kids walking to and from school, getting, God forbid, hit by a vehicle. When school is opening and closing, I have trouble, I live right in this area where the proposed building is, I have trouble getting off the property. And I have to go usually take a right, go all the way around, and come back. And it's very inconvenient. The traffic is crazy, and all this is gonna do is bring a lot more traffic, be it from the residents driving, visitors, whoever is coming to the property, to the commercial space, and we already have an issue with traffic and crowding in the area. I don't think that this development is safe for anyone, particularly those of us that already live there and our children. My son rides his bike right around this area, and I'm worried about him. I'm just very worried about all the extra cars. And as it is, you cannot fit two cars in that vicinity when you drive. If there is that parallel parking, you will not be able to. And I'm worried about access to medical and fire services because that will be so crowded and filled. So that's my concern, and I hope you really take it to heart for us that live in this community that own houses and are worried about what this is gonna do to our development, to our residential community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kenneth Wagner. I live at 112 Elway Drive, four houses in from Swan Trail. I'm a retired New York City police officer. My primary assignment was traffic control and assessment. Since my time here, I've lived here since 2018. I've seen a marked increase on traffic on Pritchard Road due to developments down at Flowers Plantation along Covet Bridge and Buffalo Road. These developments are ongoing and moving ahead at a breakneck speed. My assessment, have looking, looking at Pritchard Road is that the intersection at Athletic Club Boulevard and Pritchard Road is a limited sight distance either direction on Pritchard Road. Coming north, there's a hill. Coming south is the bend. Both sight distances are under 300 feet to the intersection. Likewise, at Swan Trail and Pritchard Road, there's an S-bend with about 300 feet, maybe a little bit less than that, again, of sight distance, which is extremely hazardous. The plan here shows right-in, right-out onto Pritchard Road. However, anybody who wishes to head north on Pritchard Road from this development would be forced to either turn right on Athletic Club Boulevard during hours of pickup and drop-off for the school, going down to the roundabout, then back up to the traffic light, which puts him in the heart of the pickup and drop-off traffic, which is exacerbated by inclement weather. Otherwise, they have to make a right turn on Collinsworth, right on Waterfield, and right on Swan Trail, where there is no traffic control except for a stop sign to make the left to travel north on Pritchard Road. And with the limited sight distance and the additional traffic, it is a very hazardous condition. And as has been stated with the pedestrians being struck, these are conditions are out of Dominion's control to address. They require DOT, but even with the traffic light, the limited sight distance can still present a serious problem with additional traffic. I don't know how to address that, but this is not gonna be safe for any pedestrians, no matter what crosswork, crosswalk additions you add at Athletic Club Boulevard and Pritchard Road. Doesn't change the fact that once they widen Pritchard Road, it's gonna take that much longer to get across. I personally have crossed there and had several close calls with traffic as they are not looking pedestrians, especially elderly. I'm 62-years-old. It's just creating unnecessary risk for these people, and it's something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jennifer Montalvo. I live at 128 Marino Place in Clayton. I'm an owner in Riverwood with my husband and two kids. I'm very worried. My son was walking to the middle school. He's going into the high school this year, but I'm very worried about these precious kids walking to and from school, getting, God forbid, hit by a vehicle. When school is opening and closing, I have trouble, I live right in this area where the proposed building is, I have trouble getting off the property. And I have to go usually take a right, go all the way around, and come back. And it's very inconvenient. The traffic is crazy, and all this is gonna do is bring a lot more traffic, be it from the residents driving, visitors, whoever is coming to the property, to the commercial space, and we already have an issue with traffic and crowding in the area. I don't think that this development is safe for anyone, particularly those of us that already live there and our children. My son rides his bike right around this area, and I'm worried about him. I'm just very worried about all the extra cars. And as it is, you cannot fit two cars in that vicinity when you drive. If there is that parallel parking, you will not be able to. And I'm worried about access to medical and fire services because that will be so crowded and filled. So that's my concern, and I hope you really take it to heart for us that live in this community that own houses and are worried about what this is gonna do to our development, to our residential community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Chris Palmer. I live at 209 Swan Trail, so just past Waterfield and up, up on the right-hand side. Really have a question for you all about the buffer type B versus type C. I really couldn't find anything else in there in the short notice that we were given to comment on this, to understand what is that buffer on a type B versus type C, and why the difference. I believe, Ms. Hooker, you kind of have alluded to that. Can, can you guys help me with that?
Do you want to finish your comments, and then we can address the question?
Absolutely. The other thing is from a traffic pattern, the right-in, right-out on Pritchard, and from how the traffic flows around there, you're gonna see a lot of people come in on Swan or come in on Collinsworth, especially with the back entrance there. The previous comment was very clear. Collinsworth is very narrow. In fact, as you're driving, and if I'm driving from Swan over into Athletic to get mail, which is what I have to do, right? drawn to scale, but when you actually see it with the amount of road space there is in addition to the, the parallel parking that was mentioned that would help supposedly alleviate some of these traffic congestion issues, that's just not going to work. It's just, currently there is no below-ground drainage. It's all above-ground gutter systems. In terms of, you know, moving that around, you're going to cause drainage issues, you're going to cause parking issues. I don't see how this is going to actually work out when it comes to school. And, you know, I'm a young guy. My wife and I, you know, may have some children in the future. We want them to go to Riverwood Elementary. And living just a few houses down from this photograph, we don't want them walking to school, even as it stands now. I can't imagine us having them ever walk to school with this going in. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana May. I live at 408 Swan Trail. And all of the people up here with me, we all are business owners within Riverwood. I've been here for thirteen years and I've had a business for seven. Some have been here longer than me and some are brand new. My question really is, I think, first off, thank you to everyone who addressed all the concerns within the community because I live right on Swan Trail and there are plenty of them. I'm also a real estate agent, so we fully understand that growth happens and we understand that. My question is, within Riverwood, we have exclusivity within the shops, so we work really hard every day to make sure that we can keep our business doors open. If these commercial spaces come here, are they also going to take into consideration what's already there? Because I'm hearing a bakery, I'm hearing a pharmacy. We have a pharmacy. We don't need to double down on what we already have or we're going to all close our doors and all that space we've worked really hard on to stay open. So my question more is, what's going to be done to keep the businesses that are there and complement those businesses? That is a major concern. So thank you. Anything else, anybody else wants to add?
Thank you. We appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Hand over here, okay.
Okay. My name is Alexis Brady. I live at 241 Swan Trail in Clayton, North Carolina, T75T7. I am a mother, living on Swan Trail now. My kids go to Riverwood Elementary. I don't even let them walk alone right now, the way the traffic is. The roads are so narrow, as a lot of people have pointed out, especially on trash day. It's impossible to get through without weaving and bobbing. It's an athletic club. I like to run. I've been hit, almost hit so many times just by the flow of traffic as it is now. So adding all of this in, I couldn't even imagine trying to navigate a community that we pay a lot of money to live in and are really proud of. I think with our community as well, the biggest draw is that the schools are right there, so it's attracting a lot of young families. There's so many children. My house alone has ten, fifteen neighborhood kids playing all the time on Swan Trail. So adding all of that additional traffic is just going to be a nightmare, like a mother's worst nightmare. People have already pointed out that there's been community members who have died by getting hit by vehicles in the neighborhood already, especially children as well. Being a part of that school drop-off, like I said, I walk my children every single day because I refuse to let them walk alone because I've seen the traffic flow. As of right now, to go across to the schools, to actually physically cross Athletic Club Boulevard to get over to the school, staff members from the school have to stand there, invest to make sure that people aren't coming in and out and getting hit. There's no lights, there's nothing out that corner. And if you're proposing for everybody to enter down that way onto Collinsworth, which is exactly where all the children cross over to get down to the Alpine Valley side of the neighborhood, it's just, it's going to be a, a nightmare. And I know, I'm not speaking as eloquently as a lot of our neighborhood people have so far, but I just can't say silent because it's just so frustrating to see this trying to come up in a neighborhood that's directed for families, especially with the schools. And the idea of asking the schools to accommodate is, is mind-blowing. They were there first. The schools are there for a reason. The people that come in are there for a reason. They're all younger families like myself and my husband. And so I just wanted to make it very well-known that it is impossible to add more traffic safely and doing so is just putting families and children and everybody else that pay a lot of money to live in that neighborhood a disservice. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Marine. I live at 413 Swan Trail, so I'm down at the end. But just looking at this, this isn't realistic. I mean, they're saying that they want to push all of the residents towards the street, but I don't know if you know this, but over the winter, there was a car that came through the back fence of one of the houses off Elway and that was because it was not paved, it was really icy and the trees actually covered the street. So we've had multiple instances of where cars were running off, off the road and onto the fences of those residents. So here they're saying that they want to help our residents by pushing the senior living home towards Pritchard and that's dangerous. It's not solving a problem. It's a very small space and honestly, if you're looking at Pritchard and you're looking down towards the development, you can see through the trees. It's very, very tiny. And North Carolina is a huge, massive state. I mean, there's sixteen acres for sale over by Flowers Plantation where they wanted to build a waterfront district. Go over there. You know, you don't have to build right here on this tiny little spot. This isn't North Hills, this is Clayton and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
I'll remind the, the folks in the audience, please, don't clap. We don't permit those in public meetings. Thank you.
My name is Marty Corningay. I live at 101 Swan Trail, which is exactly on the corner of Swan and Elway. So this, this monstrosity is right at the, the edge and the mouth of my street. The tree line is one of the things that we have on that street that brings a beauty to Alpine Valley. And now we're talking about leveling that and bringing in facility that's three stories high that we have to look out our front doors every day, you know, as well as all of the traffic problems that we're going to continue to have. You're building a facility that, you know, suppose a house, I don't know how many residents, and we still haven't filled the one that's across the street completely for residents that are elderly. Just wanted to, to add my voice to it that this is a firm no from us. I, I think I enjoy my, my neighbors and my colleagues here. We, we have a business in the neighborhood. We don't want any other commercial buildings coming in that are going to detract from what's already in the community. So as you continue to look at, at this project, this is like the second, third time that we've had to have conversations about this type of facility. I agree with my neighbor that just came up front. If you want to put something like this, put it in a place where there's room. And, and this is not that place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comments?
We'll only permit one per. I already spoke, but I want to reclaim ten seconds since I didn't use it all, if that's okay. I'll give you ten seconds. Ten seconds, okay. I don't think there is an environmental impact assessment done either. I think there may be some endangered species of bat that live here. Just wanted to throw that out and.
Those are your ten seconds, sir. Any further comments by the public?
Put it for my short stature also. My name is Sharon Stickell and I actually don't live in this area, but I'm at 204 Bergen Parkway, but am forced on a regular basis because I work in North Riley to try to figure out how to get to work now with traffic the way it is, so I end up on this road quite often. This is more of a question that relates to the buffer zone that the gentleman was speaking about earlier. It looks like it's been reduced to a twenty-foot span and I am interested in exactly what trees and shrubs you intend to put in that twenty-foot space because I actually work in landscaping and an average red maple tree gets thirty-five, forty feet wide. And what understory trees do you plan to put in there? Because an average dogwood is twenty to twenty-five feet wide at full growth. Okay, this is a thirty-year plan. How are you going to fit the number of plants that you're actually designating you're going to put in there in a space that's not even wild and wide enough to accommodate a full-sized tree? So that's something I would like to have clarified because we're running into this all over the place where there are clear-cutting areas that actually those trees, an average tree that is an eight-inch caliber tree drinks hundreds of gallons of water a day. It's already flooding in that area if you actually have to drive there. So how are you going to accommodate solving that with just that little runoff when you've got, you know, I don't even know how many square foot of roof you've got there. You've got runoff from the roof, you've got runoff from the parking lot and not enough trees to even accommodate what's going to be actually running off there. So that's something that really should be taken into consideration because it's going to affect every house that's along in that area. It's going to affect every road that you're driving on in that area and we're already flooding and a bunch of the roads in the area now because of uncontrolled building. So, you know, that's just something that really the board really needs to start taking into consideration because it is causing a problem. And those of us that have to drive in it every day, when you have to turn around because the road is flooded, now traffic is even more of a problem because you've, mostly roads are too lean roads. So you're starting to get to where there's no roads you could even drive on because we've already clear cut so much and this is a little eight-acre property, you're going to have even more of an issue, particularly for the houses around from there. So that's just something that I think you really ought to consider. So for me, it would be a no for the project the way it's currently designed because it has not taken that into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Crystal Rodriguez-Bush and I live at 332 Collinsworth Drive. And the board has asked that we don't repeat a lot of the same points and that we make unique statements. And so that's what I would like to do. Something that I would like to comment on is potential crime. I'm originally from Texas and lived in Houston, Texas for eight years prior to moving to Clayton. I'm a practicing attorney by way of background and I have seen what these types of developments due to the community, specifically with crime. The developers mentioned that the restriction for the age limit would be fifty-five years old, but that's just for the person who signs the lease. What kind of people are coming along with them? What does that mean for the community? Also, they mentioned that there are visitors that are allowed for two weeks, once a year, but we haven't, they have not addressed what the management of these facilities will look like. Typically, I can tell you from experience and from victims that I have represented myself, is that they are typically poorly lit and poorly managed and the leases are not enforced regularly. And usually with these types of victims, excuse me, there is not legal recourse against the management of the apartments. And so I just want us to consider that with such a quaint, beautiful city likely and the type of crime that we can be letting in, what that's going to mean for the kids of these neighborhoods. I live on Collinsworth Drive. Every time I come home, I see my neighbors' beautiful children playing outside. I'm also a young woman and that's something that I'm cognizant of whenever I'm walking my dogs. And so with the surrounding areas, I just want us to be considerate of that. On paper, it's like, sure, senior citizens that are in low, low-income apartments sounds fine, but we're not contemplating the crime that comes along with it and the potential unwanted visitors. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is Juliana Woodson and I live at 105 Woodson Drive. I have, I'm a little nervous. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight.
That's perfectly fine. If you wouldn't mind picking up the mic just a bit so we can hear you.
Sure. I have lived in Riverwood for almost twenty years. Riverwood and Clayton is my home and this is a community that so many of us call home and that we care about. The changes that have happened just from the, tonight we've heard from members of the community that are experts in what they're talking about. They have presented evidence and, and have opinions that matter. All of our opinions matter. And the thing, the changes that have already been made, I, you've heard tonight multiple times as far as safety concerns, especially with traffic. People speed through Riverwood. I've always, almost been hit myself multiple times. And you've heard about Ms. Kubotosi was struck and passed away from injuries. She was a wonderful woman and this is, this development will harm, it will not help. I please urge you not to approve this, not to allow this to continue to move forward. Please help us protect our community. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? All right. With that, we'll close, close the public comment part of the, the hearing and we'll turn it over to board for discussion and a motion at the appropriate time. Are there any comments from the board? Mr. Sharasky.
I actually have a couple questions that have come out of the public comment for staff. One is, do we know what the occupancy is of the senior living that's across the street? Is it at full capacity?
So across, across the street north of Athletic Club, is that the one? That, I, I do not have the information on the occupancy, if they're filled or if they're not filled. I don't have that information.
Because I don't know if the applicant has that information or not. Okay. Another question for staff. How many times has this site been tried to be rezoned or developed in its history?
In my experience here, which is just going on to two years, I haven't, we have not processed this application, but staff, the town has been in discussions with this applicant since fall of twenty-three. But as far as any formal submitted, we have not processed anything in the last two years. We have been also working with the project on the corner right there, of, corner of Athletic Club and Pritchard. That's just under review right now.
Okay. I was just trying to think throughout the history, how many times this has been developed because I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out whether the, the community is saying they don't want this site or don't want the site developed at all. Because it seems like, I don't, whatever was put, whatever is put on this site, there would be issues with it. So I'm just trying to get an understanding how many times this has tried to be developed throughout the history of the town to, to, to understand how many times things have come forward to see when there's been, when there's been people against this, something going on this site in particular. So I just, that's, that's all. I have other comments, but I just, well, I have one other question. We did hear someone ask a question or say something about the applicant getting, being part of lawsuits is, can you all address that? If that is true, that's something we heard during public comment, just wanted to ask the question.
Hi, I'm Sean Reinhardt. I'm a vice president and development manager with Dominion. We're a company that's a fifty-year company with two-hundred-and-twenty assets and there are everything from, from petty lawsuits that happen on-site. And, and there are, you know, lawsuits that have occurred throughout the fifty-year history. We're not at liberty to discuss what the lawsuits are, but every slip and fall accident turns into a lawsuit. And when you have housed seventy thousand people, think about the lawsuits that are in the community of Clayton and what have happened over the course of the history of Clayton. And when you have a company that's that size, lawsuits do occur.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Also want for clarification, the nine-year-old citizen that was hit by the vehicle and passed away was at the intersection of Athletic Club and Peyton, is that correct? That's what I understand. Because we, we've heard a lot about this. I'm just, just asking a question for clarification. That's not close to, that's down the street from this. That's not close to, that's down the street from the site. So I just wanted to make sure that's the, just that as a clarification. You all, you all have heard me say this before.
That, I'm hearing, I'm looking, sorry, just tried to jump in there with Chief, Chief David Rains and Captain Brandon Temple. I'm seeing or not, so that is, that is confirmed, that intersection?
Yeah. And the town has taken some actions at that intersection to improve signage and... I'm asking the gentleman sitting in, the gentleman sitting over here.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you mind if I make a couple of comments and then I'll pass on?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So you all have heard them, he say this a lot. Growth begets services. We don't get services without growth. The other thing about this site is that there are a lot of types of housing in Riverwood. There's single-family, there's townhomes, there's duplexes. Okay? Good planning tells you that the back of your neighborhoods are single-family, the front of your neighborhoods are multifamily. There's a transition within a neighborhood to your, to your thoroughfares because that's where the traffic is. We've heard that. That this is that natural transition from housing types to housing types. This is also giving us something, and I, I work with developers that do not, this developer in particular, so I'm not, not saying I work with them, but I have worked with developers in the past that have done senior citizen centers because there is a severe lack of senior citizen housing, not just in Clayton, but in North Carolina in this country. The, the site it's on now is Zone CRM. So they could actually put a lot of worse uses on this site that would cause a lot more traffic without having to go through this process. And most of it would be commercial and high-traffic commercial banks, fast food. I mean, those, those are the types of things that could go on the site. This town is starving for Chick-fil-A. That could go on the site if Chick-fil-A really wanted to. Okay? So there is a lot worse uses from a traffic perspective that could come on this site. The Athletic Club is Zoned O and I. Right now, under current zoning, you can put a bank there. If, if that, if Fred Smith wanted to sell that property where the, where the Athletic Club is, there could be worse things there as well. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of parts here. And I think some of the angst in the room is misguided to the town. I think, I urge you to go to the school board and talk to them about the traffic problems at the schools and put the money that was in the bond towards fixing Riverwood Elementary and Middle School. Not just build new schools, but use that money to actually fix schools that have been around for a long, 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 long time to make sure that we're not just taking care of new people coming into the, to the area, but also taking care of our longtime citizens. I think the problem here is not with this property. I think the problem is with other things that are happening in the community that I feel like a lot of people are upset with. And you had the exact right to be upset with. That school needs to be fixed. The traffic that that school causes needs to be fixed. This site is not going to fix that problem. It's not going to hurt that problem. So I will tell you, I'm going to, I'm most likely going to vote in favor of this because I think this is, this meets the natural flow. I think a senior citizen housing complex is the least amount of traffic that ever could be put on this site. And I just, I would like to see more, the, the one question I brought up earlier, I'd like to see more sidewalks. I would like to see another crosswalk of Pritchard. I absolutely agree that there's traffic problems, but remember, the more traffic there is, typically people go slower. So as traffic comes to, as, as if you know, traffic, the way traffic works, it's, it's like on the greenway, the greenways get safer the more people use them. And I'm sure a lot of you use the new sort of greenway. There should, there should be a bike lane instead of parking. I mean, we should, we should try to encourage different types of modes of use and we should, we should make sure that they're safe to everyone.
Mr. Williams?
Um, piggybacking off what you said, I am, I see a lot of issues with the traffic hearing what you people were saying. I've been through that area and all schools around Clayton seem to be congested. So is there a way we can have an addendum added to, to look at traffic patterns and work more with the DOT with this property?
With regards to an addendum, are you, are you suggesting that there be a condition that be considered by the applicant? So the conditions, modification to the conditions of approval would need to be agreed upon by the property owner and the applicant? So I, I think that might be an opportunity for the applicant to discuss how to, how to possibly commit or to address that question of how the conditions might already address it?
Okay. Yeah, if the applicant wants to speak to that, I think also just for the board, as we consider the conditions of approval that are before us in the staff presentation and packet, any changes to those conditions, as Conrad mentioned, have to be agreed upon and then ultimately taken up by town council in their final approval. And any conditions that we recommend may not be taken into consideration, but if we do that, so we try to make them as specific as possible so that staff and the applicant and town council have something to understand when they're reviewing this later on. But with that, if there's anything the applicant would like to address with Mr. Williams' question, you can feel free or we can move forward with our deliberation.
Chair Applewhite, while the applicant is, it might be worthwhile to see what other discussions the board and then whether the applicant might have time to think about how they could amend. So, so what I am hearing is addressing the traffic, possibly studying additional traffic fantasy DOT and then any other items that the board might have, we can maybe address them at one time?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
My other concern is the businesses that they were talking about. But my understanding is that the applicant has partnership with the new commercial development that's coming in. And so maybe you can work with the existing businesses to make sure that you're not having the same ones come in. Do you have that type of partnership with this commercial development?
We're getting a nod of affirmation. But I think it's being specific.
Yeah. Okay. Those are my only concerns and yeah, later, if you can just address those, I appreciate
Other comments, Mr. Gleason?
I appreciate Mr. Williams. I was going to suggest the same thing on the businesses. That kind of spoke to me. The other thing that I kind of wanted to touch on, on a lighter note compared to what was spoken first, is it's my understanding as well that this property has been under zoning scrutiny a couple of times. And based on all the notes that I was taking under public comments, I do respect and appreciate every one of you coming up and speaking. But from what I've read through in the documents and what we've showcased here today, some of those concerns I feel like would be taken care of, such as adding multi-use path and sidewalk to help with pedestrian traffic. One thing I would say to keep in mind is that if this property doesn't get developed under what is being shown right now, the developer has already made a lot of changes to their plan to accommodate something that doesn't need to be accommodated whatsoever. And so the chances of anything future coming through to better what they're trying to do is going to be very slim. And for most of what everyone was discussing, a lot of the problems that you're currently having seem to be broken down into poor planning from Riverwood's original development, for one, being just set up very poorly. And as Mr. Scharaski said, the school board and some of their problems. Riverwood as itself was probably designed many decades ago with no planning that thinking Clayton would blow up to the population size that it is. You do not see schools designed where elementary school and middle schools are right next to each other anymore. It just does not happen because they are planning for these things. And so I, for one, am also going to vote yes for this because I think it's a best-case use for the property. But the other thing I would also say to consider is if this development doesn't come through, you're still going to have the same problems in the neighborhood and they will not change because if we do not encourage developments like this, those extra services, future developments where they actually have the power to fix the things that you're complaining about won't happen. So just wanted to make that noted.
There may be further comments from the board, but also remind us that we don't have a motion on the table. If someone would like to make a motion, we can get a second and then further discuss a motion.
So I've got one question that kind of came up during the public comment. I don't know if anyone from staff can comment on this. Two or three commercial spaces have been vacant for over a year. Are we, are they, where are they in location to this? And, and then I've got a couple of comments.
Okay. So from, from staff, I did overhear, but in respect to the board and chair, the food line, the food line shopping center is what I've heard. Staff had, I have not confirmed whether those vacancies are occurring.
Okay. So my comments, I was out there today driving around extensively and there's definitely some concerns with traffic flow in that area. Definitely. No question. I'm curious, the south side of Collinsworth, is that, is street parking allowed on that? Is there any restriction against that? Anybody?
I'm, I'm unaware of any restricted parking on the south side of Collinsworth.
Okay. My concern is, the concern I have is driving down Collinsworth today, there were about probably 10 no-parking signs on the right side. We saw the drone footage that was provided earlier and there were cars parked all along the right side of the road. They were parked on the other side of the road as well. My understanding from speaking with people at the school, twofold, my understanding is there's about 300 students who are walkers that walk to the school back and forth. I feel very strongly that this area does have to be looked at for crosswalks. I know that's kind of outside of the purview of what we're looking at right now, but with that much foot traffic, I think, and again, we have to look back at the fact that we're voting on whether to rezone this or not. The site plan, I think, will have to be looked at along Collinsworth because the, the spacing there to get through there is just too tight right now. And if we try to add street parking on that side, I, I don't see it helping alleviate that problem through there. Again, I, I understand this is downstream from, from the discussion we're having today. I do feel strongly that we need to look for every opportunity we can to put seniors closer to our children, you know, and have some interaction there because there were several comments made about, you know, it's, it's almost like we're putting them there, but we, we, they have to be somewhere. And if we can put them closer to schools, maybe there could be some collaboration there. I know I'm kind of getting off topic a little bit, but, um, yeah. So it's personal to me as well. I think the applicant has, has done a lot to address, you know, the sidewalks around the, the, the plan, including the bike path. That's kind of, I think, all I have to say.
Any further comments or do we have a motion?
Chair, Chair Applewhite, if I may interrupt the board one second. There are, there were two, I wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for the applicant to discuss the comments from Williams. I have notes here about this, comments from the pedestrian walkability, about the businesses that are there on the site and, and further and work review of the traffic there. Just thank you for that reminder.
Yep. Thanks, Conrad. I'll keep this pretty brief. I tried to summarize as best I could all the comments we got. We appreciate everyone coming out tonight. You know, just to give folks a little bit more clarity, you know, again, we've been working on this project for two years. When we first brought this project through, you know, we were assuming increased density, it was four stories. The building itself was pushed closer to Collinsworth. There was no commercial whatsoever. And so after working with the community for two years, you know, we've made a lot of changes that we feel will go a long way with this community, like reducing the density, reducing building height, pushing that building away from surrounding single-family homes closer to Pritchard, adding that commercial. So, you know, we are long-term owners and operators. We want to be good business partners. We know we're going to be in this community for the long run. So this feedback is extremely helpful and valued. Just to clarify on Collinsworth, we will be expanding into our right-of-way to accommodate that two-lane undivided road. So I just wanted to provide that clarification since we did hear a little bit about that tonight. Let's see what else. You know, our residents are going to have access to several amenities onsite and offsite. So like folks alluded to, they will have the food line, they will have the retail, they will have the resources across the street, they'll have resources within the new commercial component that we're going to be constructing and within Riverwood. They're also going to have, you know, a fitness center, a library, a movie theater, all of these great amenities onsite as well. As far as studies for sewer and stormwater, those are all things that we are going to be closely working with staff on during the site plan and construction document process. This is a land use approval. We're not seeking any sort of waivers or conditions to those requirements. Those are things we're going to be working thoroughly through with, with staff. As far as traffic is concerned, you know, we understand that this is a huge consideration. As folks have alluded to tonight as well, you know, this is, you know, the, the less intense use this site can see, for lack of a better way to say that. So obviously by right, a developer could come in and put, you know, a ton of other commercial, you know, significantly increasing traffic. So because this is a senior independent living community and reduced commercial, we do feel that this is the best use for this site. And just finally on traffic, you know, seniors try and avoid going at peak hours. They too want to avoid traffic, particularly during school release times. So we just ask that that be taken into consideration as well. Awesome. I think I got everything, so.
Thank you. Well, we're into the board deliberation. Thank you. Are there any further questions for the applicant before we go back to board discussion?
Thank you all.
Thank you. For the board's edification, in front of you, there is a list of motions and consistency statements. Listed in red is the staff recommended motion, though it is up to each of us to decide which motion we would like to move forward with, listed one through four. At this time, I will recognize Board Member Scharaski.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for approval and its approval is inconsistent with the 2045 comprehensive growth plan. So I make a motion to recommend approval of the Dominion Clayton Mixed-Huse Condition Res zoning associated with concept planning conditions of approval. While this request is generally consistent with the adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan in that goal LU3 encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes and ages. The request is specifically inconsistent in that the proposed residential density of this property, project exceeds the recommended density in the 2045 comprehensive growth plan. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the area is currently zoned for corridor commercial uses. The rezoning reduces the amount of overall commercial in favor of a mix of commercial and residential. The project is providing an affordable housing option to a growing senior population that is currently unmet in Clayton. And I would like to add four conditions. Ready? Okay. First condition is to add an additional crosswalk across Pritchard. Second one is to work with the businesses along, in Riverwood on the, about the retail site to make sure that there's no duplications. Third one, you, he's good. Okay. Third one is work with NC DOT on the traffic patterns in and around the site. And the fourth one is to state the minimum age of residents at 55 or older. Any other ones that I missed? Are we willing to take friendly amendments if there are?
Mike, do you want to add accessible ramps to your crosswalk condition?
Where there aren't any at that intersection now, yes, if, if we could. But I believe there's ramps in every corner right now at Pritchard and Athletic Club.
Just for clarification, we're, are we talking about the Pritchard on, at the, at the intersection, what would be the?
Northwest, northwest side of the intersection crossing Pritchard.
For clarity for the board and staff as well, the, the recommended conditions along with this motion will not be final until agreed upon by the applicant and by town staff in any coordination with NC DOT on, on crosswalk access and otherwise. So just to make sure the board acknowledges that before we move on to...
Um, so just to make sure the board acknowledges that before we move on to the second.
Acknowledged.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Board Member Saraski, a second by Board Member Gleeson. Um, any further deliberation by the board on the motion on the table? Uh, one, I'll, I'll just make one quick comment. Um, I think all of us recognize how important these developments are, um, and the effect they have on the neighbors. Uh, we also have to recognize that folks own this property, um, and have the right to develop their property, uh, based on what they see fit in accordance with what the town of Clayton has put forward. Um, the motion on the table, uh, is, look, looking at the, the neighborhood itself, we recognize we would love for everywhere, um, and everything to look like what downtown Clayton looks like, where you can travel to your amenities. You have neighbors, neighborhoods close by. Um, Riverwood is not directly next to the, the major retail center of downtown, um, or other areas around Clayton, uh, so is creating a neighborhood hub. And with that, there are going to be residents that move into this area. I think many of our, uh, many of my colleagues on the board here have already mentioned that if it wasn't going to be this project, it would be something else and it may not be, um, as beneficial to the community. Affordable, uh, housing for, uh, I, I appreciate, um, I, I really would like to make a, a comment without outbursts from the public. And I know we have folks here that will remove folks for continuous outbursts. Um, so we are all trying our best to do what's best for the town of Clayton. Um, and with that, um, we are going to look at this development and six others after this, uh, to see what makes the most sense for, uh, for the town of Clayton. Um, I, I think this product will provide housing for people that need it most. Um, the cost of housing is not going to go down and you may not like that, but the reality is the cost of housing is not going to go down. So folks that want to live in Clayton and age in place may want to move out of their two-story house and then move into an apartment complex that fits their needs. Um, so I understand the challenges with that, uh, but it's important for us to do what's best for, not only what we think is best for the town, but based on the plans that are before us. Um, and this project fits that and my thoughts anyway. Um, so with that, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor say no. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
Chair, I'd like to motion to just take a five-minute break as people flow in and out and give us a break, just five minutes.
We're gonna take a short recess for five minutes to return at eight twelve.
We'll call the July 2028 Planning Board Meeting back to order at this time. We will welcome up Haley Downey, Assistant Planning Director for Project Number 2025-34-CZM, Clayton Village Center Conditional Rezoning. Is that correct?
Good evening, Planning Board members. My name is Haley Downey. I'm the Assistant Planning Director with the town. Tonight before you, I have Clayton Village Center Conditional Rezoning Major Modification, which is 2025-34CZM. This is a major modification to a previously approved conditional use permit, which was 2022, sorry, conditional rezoning application, which was 2022-158CZM. And the purpose of this modification today is to resolve a clerical error in the recorded ordinance. So, the original rezoning included six parcels. The record ordinance did not include all those parcels. However, it was presented at council and it was included in the master plan. So, we have advised the applicant just to correct the record by coming forth with a major modification. The properties in total are 12.39 acres in size. They're located off Clayton Boulevard and Wildwood Drive, and they're currently undeveloped. Some background on the project. The original rezoning was approved in 2022. It was approved for 234 multifamily units and up to 15,000 square feet of retail. There was also a site plan following that rezoning that was approved in 2024, and they are now under construction drawing review. And that's when we identified the discrepancy in the zoning. Proposed deviations with this modification. There are no changes to the master plan, no changes to the uses or intensities. There are some minor changes to the conditions of approval, but again, that was just to fix discrepancies, typos, small things between the master plan and the conditions. And the application, again, was only submitted to correct the record. In terms of consistency and compatibility, it is currently inconsistent with the future land use map. I will note that this future land use map should have been updated in 2022 when it was rezoned. So, that's something that we also identified. It is currently showing as medium density residential and employment center. However, it is still consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. And with that, there are conditions of approval included in your agenda packets. Again, all that changed in those were just minor typos that we helped them to fix. The Planning Board tonight will make a recommendation on the conditional rezoning application. Council will make a final decision, and staff is recommending approval. We are recommending that utilize motion number two, which is recommend approval inconsistent with the 2045 comprehensive growth plan. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well.
Before we open it up for questions, just a quick clarification. So, nothing has changed from the project at all since it was improved. This is simply an administrative fix, and this was the best pathway to getting that done?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And we are not reviewing this project in accordance with the current UDO. It is through the lens of the previous UDC?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. David DeYoung with Riverwild Development, 114 West Main Street. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have as staff mentioned. This is just to correct the record. So, if you have any questions for us, happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Now, it's with the board for their consideration. Again, in front of you, you have the motions and consistency statements on the second page of that stack you were given. The red is the staff recommendation. At this time, I'll open it up for the board to make comment or to make a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You are recognized.
Motion number two, I recommend approval, but inconsistent with the 2045 comprehensive growth plan. I make a motion to recommend approval of the Clayton Village Center Conditional Rezoning. While the request is generally consistent with the 2045 comprehensive growth plan in goal LU1, it preserves Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Goal LU3, it encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes, and ages. Strategy LU3.1.3 within larger developments encourages higher density housing types to be located in those areas with closest proximity to services, amenities, and infrastructure. It is inconsistent in that the properties are designated as employment center and medium density residential in the future land use map. The employment center component does not envision residential uses, and the density proposed exceeds the recommended density in medium density residential. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the request is consistent the surrounding land uses and development pattern of the area.
We have a motion by Board Member Hall. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second by Board Member McCurny. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Hearing none, the motion carries. With that, we'll turn it back over to Haley Downey, Assistant Planning Director for the next case, 2025-23-CZM, Hevner Property Conditional Rezoning.
Good evening again, board. Haley Downey, Assistant Planning Director with the town. This application is for the Hevner Property Conditional Rezoning, Project Number 2025-23CZM. The applicant is requesting to rezone two parcels, shown on the map on the slide, from CRM, which is the corridor commercial, and RLL, which is the residential large lot district, to CZZ, which is the conditional commercial district. The properties in total are 74.08 acres in size. They're located off of Clayton Boulevard, just east of Financial Drive and Town Center Boulevard. And you can see, see if I can get that to work, right there is Johnston Charter Academy and Walmart, just for reference of location. They are currently undeveloped, and this slide does show the public notice signs that we posted. We posted two on Clayton Boulevard and one at the end of the Stub Street in the neighborhood to the south. We also did our mailings on, July 18th was the deadline, and these signs were posted on July 16th. This is a picture of the current zoning map. You can see most of the parcels are zoned CRM currently. There is an existing strip of RLL located to the south and east along the adjacent neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to rezone all of this to CZZ. And this is the proposed concept plan. It is very general in nature. The applicant is showing the commercial area in a light pink color. That's about 51 acres of commercial. Their plan is to subdivide and have out parcels in the future, but that is to be done at a later date. They're also proposing multifamily in the rear of the development. That's shown in the darker pink shade. They're proposing up to 12 units per acre. They are proposing three access points off of Clayton Boulevard. The, see if I can get this. There you go. This one right here is a right in, right out only. They're proposing a full or signalized intersection here as their main access point, and then another signalized intersection here. They're also proposing cross access to the eastern property that is undeveloped, in case it is developed in the future. Right here, they're proposing access into the southern, or to the south, into the existing neighborhood. That would be reserved for emergency vehicles only. So, we would determine at site plan a way to prevent everyday traffic from going through there. They're also proposing to connect into Scholar Drive, Town Center Boulevard, and then they will be providing a connection into this parcel on the corner of Clayton Boulevard and Financial Drive, which is the site of the future ABC store that's currently under site plan review. ABC store currently is located right here, and it is not part of this development. The applicant is also proposing landscape buffers, which you can see along the perimeter of the development. They are proposing a 20-foot buffer along the eastern property that is commercially zoned, or would be commercially zoned in the future potentially. They are proposing a 40-foot buffer along the existing residential. They did complete a traffic impact analysis. Their anticipated build date in that was 2030 with a 2% growth rate. This was reviewed by both DOT and the town's traffic consultant, which we utilized Dewberry Engineering for. The site here is shown in red, and again, they are showing all of their recommended improvements in red as well. They're showing that right in, right out at Site Access A, the full signalized intersection at Site Access B, that will allow left turn lanes onto Clayton Boulevard. The signalized intersection at Access C would only allow right turns onto Clayton Boulevard. Any changes to the mixture of uses or the intensity of the uses outlined in the TIA would be required to be updated. So, right now, I believe their TIA shows about 330 residential units in their calculations. If they were to exceed that in the future, for example, they would need to amend their In terms of consistency and compatibility, the request is consistent with the comprehensive growth plan. The properties are designated as high density residential with a community center overlay. They are proposing a mixture of non-residential and multifamily uses, and they're proposing up to 12 units per acre, which is permitted for community center. And briefly, I will go through the conditions of approval. I'm just going to highlight the big ones, and of course, if we have any questions on them, we can go back to them. The first several conditions are really just general conditions that we place on most conditional rezoning applications. Condition number eight speaks to the timing of an annexation. So, it is currently located in ETJ. Prior to construction drawing approval, they would be required to annex to get town services. Condition number 12 speaks to the uses permitted. The applicant is currently marketing the site to potential users, so no specific uses were identified as the final uses for the development. They are listing in their conditions prohibited uses, so they are allowed to pull from the CRM or the CZZ use table category for their permitted uses. They went through that, and they outlined which ones of those they would specifically Same with the secondary uses. There are only three that they are outlining as prohibited. Condition number 15 speaks to the dimensional standards. Since this is a unified development, they are proposing some deviation in the dimensional standards from CRM's typical, and that's for the commercial component. They're also proposing dimensional standards for their multifamily component. Condition number 18 speaks to those perimeter buffers. Again, it just correlates to the buffers shown on the concept plan. It also speaks to if the undeveloped parcels to the east, and then there's one to the west, north of Scholar Drive are ever acquired and brought into this development, the need for those buffers would go away because it would become part of this development potentially. Condition number 21 speaks to masquerading restrictions. Though the applicant did submit under the old code, the Unified Development Ordinance prior to last Monday's adoption, they did opt for permit choice, but they have not had time in the past week to really go through the new language for masquerading standards. So, with that, their original plan is here in this condition, and that was to eliminate the need for a double buffer. So, along the residential portion, it would be 80 feet instead of 40 feet, is what the original code requirement was, and they're proposing just 40 feet. Condition number 24 speaks to the multifamily buildings and just clarifies some of the architectural features for the facade elements. Condition number 30 speaks to those traffic improvements. So, we took NC DOT's recommended improvements, and we put them into the conditions of approval. So, these are all reviewed by NC DOT. And condition number 34 speaks to that update to the TIA. So, again, if there is a change in the mixture of uses, that would warrant an update to the TIA that would be done in the future. So, with that, if the rezoning is approved, the concept plan and associated conditions will be tied to the land in accordance with Chapter 160 of General Statutes. Tonight, Planning Board is making a recommendation to the town council, and the planning department is recommending approval consistent with the 2045 comprehensive growth plan, and that is motion number one in your motion sheet. I'm happy to answer any questions, and our traffic consultant from Dewberry is also here, if you have any questions about that.
Any questions for staff?
I do have a question. I kind of missed it real quick here. You said this is commercial. Is that, what was allowed and what's not allowed? Because I thought this was retail, or is it commercial, or is there a difference?
Yes. Let me go back to that condition. So, in the Unified Development Ordinance, the applicant is able to pull from the use table CRM or CZZ zoning districts of what's permitted, to give themselves some flexibility. Instead of listing permitted uses, everything is permitted unless it's listed here.
Oh, these are the things that are not.
These are prohibited.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Just one quick question. Is this currently in the ETJ, or it is currently?
It is.
And so, this would be a condition, is there annexation?
Yes. So, condition number eight speaks to annexation timing. They would need to annex prior to construction drawing approval so that they could receive town services.
In regards to the typical section of Clayton Boulevard that we approved, what, last meeting or two meetings ago, can we get this changed to have Clayton Boulevard represent that town of Clayton's typical for that, to show a multi-use path on property side rather than a sidewalk?
Yes. We actually spoke about that with the applicant earlier today. I think they are open to exploring that. I'll let them speak to what they're open to in terms of conditions, but we have talked about that as of today, because this one did get submitted prior to the CTP getting adopted.
Ms. Soker?
Yeah, according to the traffic study, what's going to be the impact of the two new signalized intersections on traffic coming into Clayton from the east on 70?
That I might defer to Dewberry Engineering. They did the traffic review for the town.
So, the traffic will operate at an acceptable level of service throughout the corridor. The option that they showed there is actually for the main intersection in the centers, called the through cut, essentially, so the through movements don't, on the north and southbound approach, don't go through. They'll actually make a right and make a U-turn downstream. There's no one doing that movement, so we can allow the phasing of that signal to operate a little bit better by removing that from the timing. Does that answer the question? Yeah.
I'm not sure. I mean, I guess what I'm interested in is increasingly during the day, coming into Clayton from the east on 70, it's a, it's a long wait, and I just wondered, you know, are these signals going to improve that? Are they going to make it worse, or what?
They're going to be about the same. They're not going to be, so when you do the traffic study, usually you're looking at anything but worse than a level of service D, and nothing meets that. So, it'll be about the same, and it won't get any worse. Yeah.
Further questions? Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
I have one more, sorry. I know it was in the packet somewhere. I just can't find it right now. What is going to happen to the location, the ABC store that's there right now?
Yes. So, the current ABC store property right here is not part of this project or this application. They are, they do have a site plan under review for this site right here.
Questions for staff?
I have one question, maybe two. On the left side of the parcel, a secondary entrance, so coming off of 70, you take a right, you're going near the school. Well, there is, could you theoretically go from a parking lot of the multifamily or commercial to the school without getting on 70?
Yes. So, this dashed red line is the general traffic circulation pattern to get to the school. It would be right, oops, right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he had a term for the signal, the middle access signalized light. You know, just practically speaking, as the amount of people that will be wanting to turn left, there could be a case made that folks from the school will come back through the commercial development to go and sit at that stoplight and to turn left, and any anticipated, or any anticipation that there's going to be a very long line that stretches through the middle of the development of folks that are coming from the school or just general traffic turning left. I could just foresee that being a challenge. I recognize the traffic folks have probably thought about that as well, but I think there will be more of a demand to go left than we consider today, knowing that this will be around for a number of years, and there will be more development in between Clayton and Garner that people will be coming to this site for. But that's all. Thank you.
And one thing to note, too, mistakenly, the traffic image that I put up here was not the correct scenario. The applicant will have that in their presentation. There were three different scenarios in the traffic study.
Okay.
So, they'll have that for you.
Any further questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant? Thank you.
Chair Applewhite, if I may, while the applicant is coming forward. For a matter of the record, Board Member Mike Saraski has recused himself from this item.
Thank you, sir.
This doesn't do. Okay. Good evening, Chair and Board members. We're happy to be here to present to you what we think is an exciting project for Clayton. My name is Tom Lowell, and I'm with Casto, and I have a team here with me, Shannon Dixon, our Regional Vice President, folks from Withers Ravenel, our civil engineer, and Kimberly Horn, our traffic engineer, and from CI, our architectural design firm. So, thank you. Sorry. Bear with me. All right. So, the first thing I want to do is just give you a little bit of information about Casto. We're a 99-year-old privately tenant coordination, property management, and we have our own financing wing. And they've done probably about $1 billion of financing and refinancing in the last, each year, in about the last five years. So, I thought I'd give you some examples of some, and let me back up and just say, we have a team here. So, we're based out of Columbus, Ohio. We have regional offices in Florida and here. We've got a team of folks here that have been here, have lived here longer, but with Casto about 20 years. So, so we're regional, we're here, we're local, we're not flying in from somewhere else. One of the more significant projects that we've developed in the area is Park West Village. It's about 100-acre site. I don't know if anybody is familiar with it in Morrisville, and it is mixed-use. It's got the residential, it's got the large-scale retail, and so forth. And I think that when you look at that and the timeframe, that we developed it about 15-plus years ago, and we still own it, we're in the process of going through some redevelopment on it already. So, I think it's a testament to, you know, how long we hold these, and we stay with it, try to refresh it, and keep it, you know, in a positive, active situation. Couple of others here, just to highlight is, you know, we did Hartwell Village outside of Clemson in an area where there was no retail. We were able to bring it through our relationships, bring all these folks in to an area that the initial responses mostly were no. And I guess, again, that's a testament to the strength of our relationships with all these anchor tenants. The Grove at Town Center was a public-private partnership with about 260 residential units, a town park, a library, and, you know, mixed-use commercial space with restaurants and local shops and so forth. And then Center Point and Waterside is down at Sarasota, and that is another mixed-use project with, it's really a medical office and commercial restaurants that are all compatible. I'm not going to bore you with the site here. Haley did a great job in telling you where it is, what it is, and located, so we don't need to get into that. I will say there were a few things that we were a little bit surprised about at first when we got into, started to look at it. One is that there's stream buffer on the property and some wetlands that were not expected. But we've been able to work through the concepts and the ideas of where we think we are to utilize that, minimize impacts, and try to make it hopefully an amenity. And there is, part of the challenge is there is about 50 feet of topography from front to back, and that makes it a little bit more challenging when you start talking about large-scale retail and parking lots that people want flat pads, need to be flat, and so on. And I think that goes back to the condition that Haley talked about with the masquerading. And I can talk further about that separately. And she's already gone through the concept plan, so I, again, I don't think I need to go forward with anything, other than to say that the areas on these, the zones for the commercial and the multifamily are approximate. They're probably going to move a little bit as we get into our design, as buildings get located, tenants get landed, and we start working out all the geometry of those things. So, those lines might move some. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and the concept plan on the left is what was represented at that time. I'd say that, you know, the three, probably the big things that came out of that meeting were concerns about the adjacency of buildings and buffering, traffic concerns, and I'm missing one for some reason, but anyway, it's, those were kind of the biggest, and it's really just a general development overall, the idea that something is coming in adjacent to them after they've been there for so long, and we understand that. So, we were able to, you know, listen, hear what their concern were, and we were able to move one of our stormwater ponds over between the wetland area and some of the adjacent residents. We're working on concept plans, the site plans, to try to help buffer the rest of it as best we can. And traffic, we'll get into that, and I think our traffic consultant can come up and answer some of those other more detailed questions that you had earlier. So, our TIA recommends a, these improvements, which include a full, continuous right turn lane across the entire frontage at the west entrance, which was the access A, it's not on this plane, it would be on the next one. It's right in, right out. The main entrance is, as I said, a through cut signalized intersection, and on the east side, it is a left-in signalized. The side access B here gives you a better picture of what that through cut means. I would say simply, it's a signalized intersection that does not allow through or crossing movements from Gateway Boulevard to, to the property, or from the property to Gateway Boulevard. Every other movement is allowed. And then on access C, it will be signalized so that the left turns can get in. So, I think we're creating good access to the property, and I think what you'll have with the signals, too, you're going to see some gaps that are going to be created in the long term that allow movement in and out of other driveways along the corridor. Additionally, and you can see the access A is shown on this with the right in, right out, and then that will, as Haley mentioned, will have a connection to that adjacent property where ABC is proposing to relocate. On Financial Drive, we are going to add a left turn lane, and then we're extending Town Center Boulevard to the property. We haven't showed the scholar here, but it's been extended to the property as well. So, the internal circulation will get to all of these driveways, and so anybody coming out of the school has the ability to get into the property, and go to the signal, or wherever they want to go, if they want to go through there. And we, we believe that's going to help alleviate some of the issues that are on Financial Drive right now with all that traffic. From an architectural standpoint, we're, we're still very much in the early stages of trying to land tenants and work through things, but if all we do is give you some representations of some of the flavors, types of things that, that we're looking at, and what was going to be the the influence for how we do this. We look for something that's going to be timeless. We don't want it to be a fad that in five or 10 years has got to be redone because it's, you know, just not sustainable and it's not maintainable. So we look for materials and types of materials that are going to allow us to have a warm and comfortable feel, so that when you go there, you feel good about it. But it also is going to allow some of these tenants to have their identity, you know, their branded identity, which is really, really important, not just to them, but to us, because it gives that center the identity. And then the multifamily will have a mix of materials such as, you know, stone, brick, siding, whether it's siding panels or lap siding, but it's going to be a mix of materials and uses of those materials so that you get a nice aesthetic look. What we've got here, this is an illustrative plan, this is not our final plan, this is where we think we may be headed, but we have tenants, we have to land. So I think the takeaway from this is to see that along the frontage, there'll be what you consider probably out parcels with a mix of sit-down restaurants, quick-serve restaurants and services, and then we'd have anchored retail in the back and some adjacent junior anchors, you know, those would be things like a TJ Maxx or, you know, that type of retailer, that size. And then in the back, you've got the multifamily. And again, all these, the building sizes, shapes, you know, are still going to get tweaked and worked out as we go forward, and that's why we work with a bubble plan at best, because we probably end up with, you know, 100 iterations of a plan that, and if we had to have fixed building locations at this point, we'd be back before you, you know, every month. So I don't think that that's in the best interest of everybody. And again, this is not part of the rezoning, but we're giving it to you so you can get a flavor of what we're looking at. So since Haley covered a lot of the things that I was going to talk about, I think I'll just kind of leave it at that. Our team's here to answer any questions, and we just ask for your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Sure, Mr. Gleason.
You feel free to sit, it's fine. So my just, comments are all going to be from a roadway background. So thinking with the Towns Plan for the master typical they have for Clayton Boulevard, I know that that's priority number one on that transportation plan. So with that in mind, I already made the comment of the multi-use path and everything. Appreciate that that being considered. But my other topic of concern is, I guess, how closely would the Town of Clayton, for one, be working with NC DOT on Clayton Boulevard, formerly US 70? Because I think in this specific situation, given its designation, you probably would consider a 36-foot median rather than a 30, but I know since the municipality, we probably have a little bit more fluctuation on that, that could change right-of-way impacts. And just based out of experience from the developer's point of view, is there a way that when we do the design of the property, to also include the future bus lane that's being proposed, and somehow incorporate a shoulder section rather than a curb and gutter at the start, just so, one, it saves the developer money in the short term, but also helps future residents and traffic congestion from not having to build a curb and gutter system with drainage to have it eventually just be ripped out and moved 12 feet over? So those are just some of my high-level considerations.
I will note that NC DOT is part of our technical review committee, so when the individual site plans do come in, they will be reviewing alongside us to make sure those cross-sections are correct.
Okay.
And then I was just told that the bus lane is part of the study that's going to be done this fall.
Okay, so, so I guess by the time the study's done, the designer will probably be a little bit further along at that point to maybe have it incorporated?
Correct, yeah. So we're working with Campo, we're doing a kickoff meeting, the bus extension, and then Campo had asked us to include the bus, a bus lane, the conceptual is one of the cross-sections for Clayton Boulevard.
Okay, perfect.
So Tucker McKenzie with Withers Ravanelle, civil engineer on the project. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the request is to consider allocating space for that future, potential future bus lane, not by not providing curb and gutter at this time. And if that is what I'm hearing, then yes, we'll totally consider that. I think right now, we were considering keeping the ditch section roadway through there for those considerations as well, so we can definitely consider what that space allocation kind of looks like and how that may interact.
Yeah, exactly, just because I know like in Fuquay and a couple other places, some designs have been put forward where, yes, this is like the future plan, like curb and gutter I think is a more favorable option for most people, but then when you start talking about widening the typical in like five short years, the developer, you've wasted money putting a curb and gutter section in, just have it ripped out, that wastes taxpayer money for DOT having to rip it out and put it back just 12 feet over. So if you leave a ditch section, I think, long-term, as long as the multi-use path is still there, it kind of benefits both parties there and alleviates traffic. My last question that I have is, from the buffer perspective, and maybe this is more geared towards any residents that are in the audience tonight, can we put an allocation in maybe for some, also some like fencing that the developer would build, especially on the backside that butts up against the neighborhood, just to prevent any crossing over from people wanting to walk from the development through people's yards, if anything? Kind of similar to like an addendum that we had made for a property like last year, that's something we can add?
So I will say for the buffer, that 40-foot buffer along the residential homes to the south and east, that is a type D buffer. It is 40 feet, the applicant is proposing, one of the conditions is that the quantity and the sizing of the plantings will still meet that typical requirement. If the board wanted to recommend a condition of installing fencing, that is something the applicant would have to agree to for that condition, but I'll defer to the applicant to speak to that.
As far as the buffer, there's a couple of things that, just want to say, we're going to actively survey, and we're actually out there surveying those areas to try to retain any of the large trees and in that zone as possible, and then augment it to get to that opaque buffer as necessary. So the idea is trying to keep that in there so that you have full-height mature trees in that zone. As far as adding, you know, fencing, I think if there was some kind of parameters where that is, rather than along the entire length of it, I think that's something we certainly would be willing to look at. You know, where buildings are proximate or closer than some distance, we certainly be willing to listen and work with that. I think we moved the stormwater pond over there to try to create that separation, to get buildings further away and the activity further away wherever we possibly could.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
I've got one question, it's kind of for the applicant and for staff. If I'm reading this correctly, a certificate of occupancy is conditional upon the sewer line being installed on the south side of the property. What is the status of that? And am I, I mean, that is correct, right? And, you know, I'd hate for this to drag out because it's not, you know, a priority for the town, the sewer line. Is that correct?
So I've had some peripheral conversations with our engineering department on that, but as far as the exact timing of that, I'm unaware of the exact timing of that sewer line.
I can tell you what we know from staff is that they're in the process of easement and right-of-way acquisition now. The intent is to try to get it completed by the end of this year and go out to bid, start the construction, you know, next year and be completed by sometime next fall, like early fall. So, you know, and our timing is such that we're looking to be able to start construction in the spring of next year, and ideally be opening up, you know, our first tents and so forth in March-ish of 2028. So that should work for us in the timing.
Any other questions of the applicant? I have a couple of questions. First and foremost, is this going to be a phased development?
So I think that's an important thing, and it goes along with the masquerading, is that with the types of tenants that we have, the anchor tenants, once we hit the ground, speed is of the essence to get there because they have targeted dates, some of them, you know, have very limited dates what they open during the year, so we have to hit those timeframes. And the multifamilies are going to come right along with that. So as soon as we can get these things, you know, going vertical on all components, our intent is to get that done. And that, you know, to get from spring of '26 to, you know, spring of '28 with all this starting to open up, there's probably going to be some out parcels and maybe, you know, that are going to trail a little bit, and the multifamily will probably start opening shortly thereafter, so.
So you see the anchors coming in first, and then the multifamily development, you know, starting to be developed as that's happening?
Yeah, it's all going to be being developed at the same time.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of deliveries and when people open. So I would say you're probably going to see some kind of rolling opening starting spring, maybe going through into the fall, and maybe there's a straggler or two on an out parcel or something like that.
Okay, and with the preliminary plan that you had put forward, so along Clayton Boulevard 70, formerly 70, so those are all out parcels along the top frontage?
Yeah, yeah. But it's going to be a mix of, you know, we've got great interest. One of the good things here is, in a time with interesting and kind of challenging economics and economy for retail, large-scale retail, we're in a situation here, we've got great interest from all kinds of people that, you know, we're trying to work through. So I think that's a very positive thing for your community, and I mean, you should be proud of that. So as we go through that, we've got to kind of fit the mix that we think is best for the project, for the community, and that, we feel like there's going to be a mix of some sit-down restaurants, some quick-serve restaurants, and then probably some other services. And ideally, some of these folks may be new to the region, you know, not just new to Clayton.
With that, and this is kind of a separate question outside of the rezoning itself, do y'all work and look for local businesses to fill in any of these spaces or any of the smaller areas?
Absolutely. I mean, it's, I think if you've been out to Park West, you can see there's a mix of national, regional, and locals, and we feel that that's an important thing, you know. Certainly on the large-scale retail, those are going to be national folks, but on the other smaller spaces, you know, some of these, you know, your local folks, you know, some phenomenal local tenants who, whether they're restaurants or not, but they really run their business well, and we think that that's, you know, an important part of any of these types of projects.
Great. Shifting gears just a little bit, I went through the neighborhood meeting notes, I think the fencing was mentioned in those. On the, kind of the northeast side of the property, it's a 20-foot buffer, I guess there is additional parcel that's next to the, you know, parcels that we're looking at. Okay. I thought those were, that was a residential neighborhood, so it looks like there was a stubout that maybe.
Yeah, the property that kind of has a long finger that goes back between lots.
Yeah.
Yes, it's got a commercial overlay on the front, and it's got a piece of residential in the back, from a zoning plan standpoint, so.
The houses are along the other side of that parcel. There's the.
So your housing, all your residential housing is in these small lots.
Right.
This piece of property is what I think you're talking about, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
So up to about this point, it has a commercial overlay on the front.
Right.
So that's where the, you know, the buffer comes in.
And on the plan that y'all had, y'all have before us, there is kind of a recommended stubout to that future development.
Yeah.
And then I think Haley had mentioned earlier, the connection into that residential, it's always tricky. I know emergency services would like it to be as easy and clean as possible.
I would say that's the other point from the community meeting, is we don't want that connection. I don't think the community wants it necessarily because they're concerned about traffic going through the neighborhood.
Right.
I think traffic patterns, you know, it's unlikely that somebody could do that. So, you know, we just don't feel it's like the right thing to make that connection. But emergency services is, hey, we need it for an extra access, so I think what we're working through with staff is to find a way to accommodate all of that, which is to go up with some kind of a gated, bollarded, some way to restrict vehicular access except for the emergency services, and then try to discourage, you know, pedestrian traffic through there as much as possible, but, you know, some of the residents may want that too, I don't know, but.
And we're continuing to get in the weeds here, the, is there an easement? I don't know if it's a Duke Energy, or is there an easement that runs through the neighborhood into this part of these two parcels?
Yes, yeah. All along, right along the backside through here?
Okay.
That's a power easement, yeah.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't affect any of the multifamily over there?
Yeah, we'll be able to kind of develop up to that line, and, you know, there are some places where you can put parking and some other things in there, but there are the limitations that come into play. But on the south side of that, that's where we're looking at stormwater, and there is a wetland area kind of in the corner.
And that leads to my next question about the, I think there's a riparian buffer, some wetlands, the topography's a little goofy, if you will. What are y'all doing to mitigate that? I know you're talking about the masquerading plan and mitigate impact to the neighbors. I know runoff continues to be a topic when there's major development next door to what is large-lot subdivision. So what are some of the things y'all plan to do to mitigate some of that and to avoid the impact that may happen to those neighbors in their backyards?
I mean, I guess, first of all, we're going to meet your stormwater requirements, that's as it is, but we're bringing everything into a stormwater facility as they're going to discharge back out into the wetlands and kind of carry that through. So it's not discharging, you know, sheet flowing out across people's yards per se. I mean, there is one resident in the back where the wetland kind of flows through, and we'll be talking with him as we start getting further down the road, just to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Well, does that, does that answer your question? It does. You know, I think when these sorts of projects come forward and you have a budding directly to residential, I think you've already moved the stormwater retention pause, and I hope that the neighbors are able to make additional comments to y'all as you go through development that makes them a little bit more, or a little less uneasy about the project itself. But just thinking about, you know, it is a tricky parcel, we just want to make sure that we don't have to come back in a few years and we hear complaints from neighbors about the impact to the, to their property from the development, which I hope will not be the case. But with that, I don't know if there are any other questions before we go into public comment. Are there any other comments from the applicant?
No, I think that's it. I was just checking to make sure our engineer didn't want to add anything to that.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up to public comment. For those of you that were here earlier, you'll have three minutes to speak, state your name and your address, and we will let you know when your time is expired, so you can come up as you wish. And again, we ask that the public comment be made to the board, not to the applicant or to staff.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Shaw, I live at 728 Lightfoot Drive, Clayton, North Carolina, 27520. May I distribute an overview of how the neighborhood feels this? I apologize beforehand, I'm feeling a little under the weather and public speaking is not my forte, so let me know if I need to speak up. Good evening, Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dan Shaw, I live adjacent to the proposed Havner rezoning project. I come before you not in opposition of thoughtful development, but in support of a more responsible, transparent, and community-minded approach to all be a significant change to our town. In 2006, a 125-foot no-development separation was put in place by this council's predecessors to protect Lightfoot Drive and the surrounding neighborhood. That buffer isn't just a line on a map, it's a symbol of long-term planning, promises made to the people who live here. Reducing that separation to just 40 feet now, without broad consensus and due diligence, threatens to undo that trust and could very well damage our property values and our way of life. We understand growth is coming, but that growth comes with responsibility. Many of us, myself included, only received notice of the planning meeting 10 days ago. That's during peak vacation season. One of our neighbors, a professional with a master's degree in urban planning and a lifetime of development experience, returned from a trip to find the neighborhood meeting we had already taken place. He and many others had no real chance to engage. A 339-page rezoning packet with complex data was issued with barely enough time to read it, let alone organized thoughtful feedback. That's not the kind of transparency this community deserves. We're asking, respect. We're asking respectfully that this rezoning be postponed until proper public engagement can take place. There are unanswered questions and missing pieces of the puzzle. Has traffic impact analysis been completed and shared publicly? I see it's been completed, but this is our first sight of it. Where is stormwater from this site going to drain? And has the environmental impact been reviewed? What road improvements are being made preventing backups and safety issues on Highway 70? Who's paying for the added burden on schools, emergency services, and parks and rec? What architectural or aesthetic standards will be enforced that the developer exits the project? And crucially, what guarantees do we have that no obnoxious or incompatible businesses will be permitted on this site? This isn't just about zoning. It's about protecting our families, our homes, and our shared investment in this community. We ask for clear conditions to be added to any future rezoning, including a hard commitment to the original 125-foot separation, no public access to Lightfoot Drive from the development, clearly defined construction hours and noise limits, developer accountability for road damage, runoff, and emergency service impacts, a legally binding list of prohibited uses, and public release of all environmental stormwater and traffic studies. We're not trying to stop growth. We're trying to shape it in a way that works for everyone. In closing, I urge the board, take a step back, postpone the recommendation, allow for full transparency, community engagement, and responsible planning. Let's make this project something we can all support, not something we're forced to live beside with regret. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Bill Brewer. I live at 744 Lightfoot Drive, which backs up to this subdivision. Our main concern here is the protection of our subdivision from crime, other people coming in. We are totally against any interest into Lightfoot Drive from the subdivision. We also request that you recognize and consider and honor the previous commitments that were made of the 125-foot separation buffer that was there. That was put there purposely to protect our neighborhood. We feel that this should be honored. Also, we have not had an opportunity to look at the new concept that they've come up with since our neighborhood meeting. We would like an opportunity to review that before any consideration is made as far as future development on this. We're not against the development. We know it's coming. We understand that. We just want to have our say and be protected.
Good evening, board. My name is Nick Fares. I live at 780 Lightfoot Drive. And I too share a lot of the concerns that the people that spoke before me have. I will commend the developers from the initial plan when we had our meeting in February of 2025. They have made some changes to better buffer our community from both the commercial and the residential development. However, this is the first time we've been able to see it. We don't know that those changes are concrete. If they are variable, we certainly have concerns that the buffer will not be sufficient to provide sound, safety, visual, and noise and trash from entering and undoing our way of life. We live in an isolated area and one of the big concerns of mine is safety, especially with multifamily residential. The possibility of residents of that community coming into ours is a great concern of mine. There's nobody around. We live on large lots and that's wonderful. However, if there are intruders, no one will see them. No one will know they're there. And I do feel very strongly about the safety issue. I think a barrier, a physical barrier between our community and the development would be in order. The stormwater ponds are a good start, but some opacity, that was a word that was used when we met with them, an opaque barrier. Now opaque could mean bushes. An opaque could mean a wall or something that could physically keep people from entering our community. A development like this is going to impact not only our community, but the community at large. And I think that the traffic study is important if it's done and if it meets the requirements of the town, we'd still like to see how that's going to impact ingress and egress to not only the development, but down the line to our community. Otherwise, I'm not opposed. I think it's a good project. It's an attractive project. Their track record speaks volumes. However, we certainly have concerns as a neighborhood that's been in Clayton for decades. And we'd like some assurances, concrete, that there will be a physical barrier between our community and theirs. There will be no intrusion by vehicular traffic into our community. These are important points.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Mary Wood. I live at 736 Lightfoot Drive, which is backed up to the development proposed. The buffer is definitely of concern of mine. I have small children. It's a beautiful view out of my backyard and I don't want that to change to parking lot lights, cars moving in and out, TJ Maxx, Target, those types of things. I know development is coming. I agree that we do need the 125 buffer. That's fair. I mean, we don't want to stop that. I have a different perspective. My children went to JCA. When we could turn left out of our neighborhood, that made, I've lived through that change where you go right, go do a U-turn and come back around. The traffic going out of JCA at the change of school, Walmart's traffic is a disaster. Now, I don't know about traffic studies. I know about a lived experience and it is not good. So to think about anchor stores, multi-housing, and everything else going in that spot is very concerning to me as a resident, as a parent. So I just wanted to share that.
Hi, I'm Troy Dehaven. I live at 717 Fernwood Drive. I have a master's in urban planning, bachelor's degree in urban planning and real estate development. I've been doing it all my life. Develop single-family homes, apartments, commercial mixed use. If you all, if someone was putting that senior living facility here, I'd say take it and run. By all means, we support it. That's the least offensive use there is. Conversely, this has the potential to be or have the highest impacts. I have nothing but good things to say about the company, the development company. I think they do spectacular developments. We just haven't had a chance to sit down and talk with them enough to understand what exactly is going here. There's been no architectural guidelines, no design guidelines that are being proffered. I don't think any concept plans are being proffered. When the neighborhood meeting happened in February, I came back from being out of town four days and there was a notice on my mailbox, the meeting had already happened. I thought they were going to come back once the TIA was done and have another meeting. That hasn't happened. I can tell you the left turn into the charter school stacks out on the 70 every day. Our turn lane in the Fernwood stacks out on 270 every day. I disagree with the 2% growth rate from Newberry. It's 540 that's being constructed right now and been taken into account there. We just have lots of concerns that nothing, once you all zone this, it's hard for us to come back and get our conditions as part of the zoning. We're asking that this be postponed 30 days. So that we can sit down and have our concerns addressed, meet with the developer, and let's get some of these conditions part of the zoning. I don't think that's asking too much. And so we respectfully would like to ask for an extension, table this for 30 days. Let's have some meetings. There's other concerns. I know I'm out of time, but let's have some meetings. Let's go through all of them.
You have 30 more seconds, so you want to use it?
That's enough. Again, just, we just feel like we've not had the opportunity to express our concerns. I'm not asking that they do architectural guidelines, design guidelines. I don't even think the renderings are being proffered. Let's proffer something, a concept plan, architectural plans, something so there's some teeth in this zoning. And we can all sit down and talk about it. We just haven't had the opportunity. That's all I'm asking. That's all we're asking. The 80-foot buffer that's now going to 40, we asked about that in February. We never heard back. So news to us tonight.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Any other comments?
My name is Art Mercer and I live at 741 Lightfoot Drive, right across the street from Mary that spoke before Troy. My main concern is, in addition to what's already been provided, is the storm drain runoff. And I know there's great engineering. I really appreciate this developer here listing at the initial meeting and putting it in the concept plan, which tonight is the first time we've seen the update. So we really don't have the opportunity to just study it. But on that new concept plan, it has a retention plan, a retention pond, the large one that's That area today is basically behind where Mary lives, that I live across the street. So I'm just, she's sort of up, I'm up on the hill, but she's up on the hill. My backyard is low. Bill Williams is in the audience here. His is up the hill. So there is a huge culvert or reinforced concrete pipe running under the road from Mary's house, down my property line, goes across the woods in the back, dumps in down where Nick lives into a 15-inch reinforced concrete pipe. Now, how does that make sense? And I just want to be sure that the storm runoff is addressed in this. And I have no doubt it will be, but it really concerns me because right now, when you have a real heavy rain, my basement floods and I'm uphill. And we have people that are living down by the creek. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanne O'Larry and I live at 733 Lightfoot Drive. And my husband and I and our two little kids, they're seven and nine years old, just moved there a year ago. And we literally closed on our house and in two weeks, this property was sold. The neighbors told me that this property has been looked at for development three or four times already now. So we know that development is coming and I am not opposed to development. I am from Florida, Tampa Bay, and I can tell you a lot about development that we've been through. But one thing that I am concerned about is the fact that the, I live on Lightfoot on the other side from where these properties are going to be backing up. So the neighbors on the other side of me are going to basically have like parking lots behind them. Mary, Dan, who was the first one who was speaking, he's one of those is right directly across from me. And I do have a question kind of for the developer with that, but I'm going to address the board. But I did want you to notice that on Slide 20, which was the one right before this, they have their community at the very base of this entire thing. And they're going to literally have like a pond and trees. And then they're going to go down into the bottom of this at the end of Lightfoot and they're going to be looking at trees. And they're going to be looking at trees on the other side. And they may even have some trees if the developer's nice and put them on the north side. And they're not on Highway 70. Dan's backyard, Mary's backyard, and everybody else on that street that has been there for 30, 40 years is going to have a parking lot in their backyard. So I'm asking, why do existing houses have parking lots behind them and new residents get ponds and greenways? So I would like for the developer to consider that because this, this community has been here for 40 some odd years. This has been your tax-based town of Clayton. They have been good to you for 30, 40 years with taxes. And I would appreciate it if you consider that and honor their 120-foot easement that they were guaranteed. I also want to say too that my husband and I bought a 1982 home in this neighborhood. We could have bought anything else in a neighborhood that was just built last year. We came from Florida last year. The reason why we bought in this neighborhood is because sitting in traffic on 70, take a right into this neighborhood and you immediately enter an oasis. And you can literally feel the pressure come right off. And that's because of the beauty. So what worries me is whenever this is all developed, these two plots right here, that finger piece right there that goes behind my property, that goes behind Jay's property, that goes behind, I don't know who else's property it is, but everybody has like two to three acre lots basically in there. And if that finger gets developed and there's another lot that's sitting right on the bottom of that, Mulberry, I'm afraid that you're going to let the through traffic go right up into all this new development and we're going to get big box doors behind us too. Fernwood and Lightfoot on the other side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
My name's David Outlaw. I'm 724 Lightfoot. If you'll look at the map along the eastern border of the Havner property, right in that corner where you have two red lines, that's my house. Now, we went through this back in 2006 for all y'all that were in Clayton. Remember when the Indiana developer came down trying to take the property and make a white oak shopping center out of it? So, and we're not against, we're not against that. We're not against this project here. It's just, we were told at that town council meeting that the separation between our property, which is the red line that comes on down to the creek, that the separation between our residential property and then to be commercial property would be 125 feet plus the buffer. And if you look on your little map there, it'll show you that the thing Dan handed out, it's a separation between residential and what to be is now commercial and it's commercial today. And then we're doing the multi-use thing here, which now says we're just going to give you a 40-foot buffer. You know, can anybody explain that? I mean, we're not against the project. We want a project to come. It's going to be a great thing for the town of Clayton. But we just want to protect the six, seven houses along this buffer on the east side that I've heard 20-foot, I've heard 40-foot. Mr. Havner himself came to my house in his Cadillac in 2006 and we pulled the tape, my property stake in that corner on Lightfoot. And he says, you walk it back as far as you want to go that you're satisfied with 125 feet. And I said, yes, sir. He said, that's the way it's going to be. It was represented to the Indiana developer and he soon bailed. He couldn't handle it. So if you go back and look at the history of 2006 case, you will see that what I'm telling you is the truth. All I'm asking you to is review it before you make a decision. We want, we want the project. I'm not against the project, but we got to look after the neighborhood. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
My name is Andy Pleasant. I live at 925 Mulberry Road in the Dogwood subdivision. We have not heard anything mentioned about when the traffic improvements that you have talked about would take place. We would hopefully that they will be before all this stuff would take place. So we'd have lights and that stuff coming in on our subdivision. And hopefully it'll be then and not later on. So that will be more convenient to all of us there in Dogwood Forest. And then it's been sort of short of time. A lot of us would like to table this for a little bit so we can get together and, and find out more about what we need to do as far as the traffic patterns and all these things. Because this is going to be a really big development, probably the biggest one we'll, Clayton and I have. We want to make things, sure things are done right and correctly. And we understand that what y'all are trying to do is for the community, for the well of the community. But we just want to make sure we look after us and, because we're the ones in and out of there every day. And traffic there right now is a problem anyhow. But thank you for what you're doing and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. We will close the, the public comment part of the hearing and we will move to board discussion. And for a motion, reminder that the motion and consistency statement is before you with the recommendations by staff in red. But at this time, I'll turn it over to members of the board for their consideration. Mr. McCurney?
Yeah, I keep hearing about the, the biggest thing I've heard is the 125-foot promised buffer. Do we know anything about it being promised? I guess that goes to the planning.
So we did look into, back to early 2000s. We found a special use permit from 2003 for the adjacent tracks south of the Charter Academy there and behind Walmart. And in their conditions, it required the developer of the Hevner property in the future to support and enhance buffer. But of course, that permit, that was never developed anyway. And so that permit has since expired. That's the only reference that we could find to any sort of enhanced buffer. It being zoned RLL, again, we weren't able to find anything tying to that. My assumption is maybe the intention was when the property was zoned in the past sometime to preserve that. But there are, there were no conditional zonings back then, so there were no conditions tied to it.
What was the, did the ordinance have any, ordinance from, I guess it would have been 2003 or 2006, that period, have any description of what a buffer should be between these two properties or generally speaking?
I would have to go back and check the ordinance at the time. But again, any past approvals would be expired at this point.
Of course.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Brittany Vega with Withers Revenal. And we did pull that special use permit that Haley's speaking of. And the buffer that is spoken about, we couldn't find anything else. And we did work with Haley and town staff to try to dig up as much as we could. And in that special use permit, it talked about the property owners south of the Charter Academy speaking in favor of a buffer on the Hevner property. So it wasn't a commitment of a buffer specifically. It was that they would come and speak in favor of it. And that special use permit is expired. It was never developed. So that's what we found. And again, we, we did a good bit of research and went through a lot of minutes and couldn't find anything that was specifically conditioned or tied to.
So, so for the record, what I'm hearing here is that there is no legal document that indicates there's a 125-foot buffer in place or required for any development on the Hevner property.
Well, we'll allow staff to, to comment first and if there's any other information, we can provide it after. Sir, we, we'll let staff speak to it and then we'll address your, your comment shortly.
And again, before staff comments, I, I understand what everybody, everyone has said about the 125-foot buffer. I get that. But I also know how gentleman's agreements and stuff work too, because I've been in the development game for 40 years myself as a landscape architect. But my question is, what I want a point of clarification for is whether or not there is a legal binding agreement for a 125-foot buffer.
Staff, researched back to the early 2000s, we were unable to find any binding agreement for that 125-foot buffer.
All right, thank you.
If, if I may, Chair and Board, I would think that that legal agreement, if it doesn't exist, I'm using air quotes, is the fact that it is currently zoned RLL. And, and my, my experience is when codes did not have required perimeter buffers, zoning was a tool to have that buffer. So I would, I would say that you have, the zoning itself can speak and attest to the legality of that buffer. Even though it's not a buffer, it's a zoning district.
Thank you. Again, we have the motions in front of us. You can continue to ask questions of staff and the applicant as you need to. Mr. Gleason, you're recognized.
So looking at the towns and Johnston County's GIS sites for how everything's mapped, in our case of what we're approving or not approving, are we looking at specifically approving the rezoning of how the whole property is going to be zoned? Or are we approving or not approving how the already portioned zoned property is to be rezoned? Because like I can see on the GIS maps that the RLL probably is 125 feet into their parcel, into the parcels. So we would be essentially removing that for rezoning if that, that's what we're approving is what I'm.
Yes, that is correct. So you would be rezoning the CRM portion and the RLL portion to CZZ.
Are there other comments by the board? I'll, I'll make a, a couple of brief comments because I, I think this is important. This is a major project. This is important. This has been discussed and discussed with town staff and neighbors and others. I, I think that it is important that there is a continuous conversation and partnership with the neighborhood. If they feel like they have not been heard, that is frustrating for a number of reasons. But I don't know if there's any way for us to get 125-foot development buffer because of the, the reality of, you know, development as it is, 125 feet. I, I don't think, certainly on the time that I've been on the board, we've had a buffer that large for any project. I do think there needs to be consideration about a buffer that will make the, the neighborhood happy or at least make their concerns lessen. So that is on my mind. That being said, when is this case expected to go? Before town council with our recommendation? Again, this board does not approve. We just provide recommendations for approval.
Yes, so following tonight's meeting, it would be scheduled for August 18th.
Okay.
And that would be the public hearing. So we would advertise in the newspaper, additional letters would go out to adjacent property owners 10 days prior. And it would also, the signs would be posted on the site as well.
Given the, the motivation, I presume, for the applicant and for the neighbors and for the town, I think it would be worth there being some informal meeting amongst the, the development team and the neighbors prior to that meeting. I'm not necessarily advocating for postponing this or kicking this can down the road. Rather, I think we all need to move expeditiously to meet with and hear the concerns of the neighbors. We can start by providing this to the development team to go through. And while not all of these items can be addressed, I do think it's important to have a continued conversation. And that's just from my perch, looking at this project today. Because there are a number of items here, but what we continuously are hearing that is this project's not a bad project, they just want to have a conversation. And whether we as a board want to impose additional conditions that we think will support what the neighbors and the town need, certainly the board can consider that. But I think at the very least, there needs to be some meeting. And I don't want to call it a neighborhood meeting or, it needs to be some informal meeting if it's at town hall or in the parking lot between the development team and the neighbors before, what is it, August 18th? So that's what my thoughts are. I'm interested to hear what the board has to say. We also have to put forward a motion. Currently, the conditions provided are the ones that town, town staff has provided. I don't know if it needs to be a condition of our approval this evening, that there is some meeting, and I hate to even call it a meeting, but a conversation. And it could be here in the next 30 minutes between the development team and the, the neighbors. But there needs, in my opinion, something, some conversation to be had prior to the town council meeting just to hear the concerns. But I'm not interested in delaying what ultimately would be a, a motion for this board. Town council can table it upon their own consideration, but I don't think the planning board needs to do that.
I think Chair Trav, I think looking at the develop, the development team, are you all planning to have any continuing conversations with the neighbors in, and prior to the town council public hearing?
We're happy to, to meet with them and talk with them. I'll just say, you know, I'm not sure we'll come to a meeting of the minds. As I said before, I think there is, we're willing to put some conditions in for walls in some places, but a 125-foot buffer will probably make this project go away. So, and to answer what everybody else was saying is, the only thing we could find in the record was for a property that is on the west side of the site, that in that approval, there was a condition for that developer to support and speak for a, a buffer on the Hevner property. There's no tie to the Hevner property. There's no legal way for that property to, to impose that onto it. So, yeah.
And, and I, I'll speak for myself and not the entire board, that I don't think we're asking for 125-foot buffer here this evening. I, I do think there is some considerations that should be made with the, the neighbors prior to the town council decision. And whether it's a 40-foot buffer or an 80-foot buffer or a 20-foot buffer on the east side of the project, I think that's something that needs to be discussed. Because there are a number of items here that I think are, you know, we do have to keep in mind that there are, whether this neighborhood would have been planned today is beyond the scope of what we're doing. But there are reasonable concerns. And part of the work that the planning board has to do is look at the adverse impact to surrounding property owners. There certainly could be some adverse impact, this major project. But I also think there's a lot of good things about it. So that's why I think it's important we move this thing along. But if there could be some conversation to address those adverse impacts.
And I could just add that, you know, a delay would not be a positive thing for us. You know, we are under contract, we have dates we have to meet. And, you know, a, a delay will really, you know, put the project at risk.
Well, I will not make the motion, but I hope that we can do it in a way that allows for the project to move forward to the next town council meeting, recognizing that the neighbor should have a conversation with the developers before then. I don't know whether that needs to be in the form of a, of a condition or if we just hear it in the public hearing.
So a condition would not be the most appropriate route for that. I would recommend that you all make a recommendation that the developer meet with the neighbors and then it's up to them to connect. If they don't, you know, and they go to council, council may choose to table it if they see fit. The reason it's not recommended for a condition is just because that condition won't be.
Exactly.
It won't be tied to the project unless the project gets approved. And so there's really nothing to hold them to that.
Correct. And I'm getting a thumbs up from the attorney, so she is agreeing with everything you said. Other comments from the board or a motion?
Mr. Carter? I'll, I'll make a quick comment. I was not familiar with your company before this meeting. You mentioned a, a development you did, I was not aware you did Center Point. I'm very familiar with that property, that development. And I have to say that it is in a very wet area. And this is for some of the residents that are here. I didn't really pay attention when I was there to how it was handled. But I can, I can say that you did a really good job with the stormwater management there because it's in a very low area. There's a lot of water there. And, you know, it's, and it's a really nice development. It, it added a lot of value to that part of the, the town east of the interstate there. I think you guys did a really good job on that. And I can see in the plan that you presented, there, you know, for the, for the residents that are here, there are mandatory requirements for stormwater management. But the way you've handled the buffer there, it, it, it looks like you've really taken into consideration that lower area. And I think they have expressed some concerns about the flow of water. And I think that's an important part of this development. So I would, I would, you know, I guess I'd just ask, handle it the same way you did at Center Point. And, you know, I think it, it would, it would be a great opportunity to, to, to do this. That's all I had to say.
Mr. McCurney, did you still have a statement?
Yeah, I would, I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval to send this to the council consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. I make a motion to recommend approval of the Hevner conditional rezoning, the associated concept plan, and conditions of approval based on consistency with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. In that, the properties are designated in the future land use map as high-density residential with a community center overlay. Goal LU1 preserves Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU1.3 encourages non-residential land uses in areas consistent with the future land use map. And goal LU3 encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, family size, and ages. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
We have a motion and we have, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member McCurney and a second hand by Board Member Williams. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the project say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. We're going to move straight into our next item on the agenda, Item D 2025-56, Street Closers, Shotwell Apartments, with Audrey Duchesne, Senior Planner. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. It might just be a, a straight-up motion to recommend approval to town council. Give it another minute. We're going to bring the, the meeting back to order so we can get this thing rolling. For a point of clarification on this case, we don't have a motion and consistency statement for it. Is it just a normal motion to recommend closure to the town council or?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Will it be on a slide, the language for the motion anywhere? Will it be on a slide, the language for the motion anywhere?
Um, I mean, there's no.
That's fine. We can make it work.
It's not a legislative kind of process, so.
That works.
It is just a motion. I will just make sure that I have, there's a motion for approval.
That, that works.
That's a staff recommendation or?
Yeah, that'll be.
Motion of, is approval.
Right. Okay. You're recognized whenever you're ready.
I am, okay, perfect. Good evening, everyone, planning board members. My name is Audrey Duchesne, and I am one of the senior planners here at the Town of Clayton. Tonight, I will present the street closure in relation to the Shotwell Apartments project. The project number is 2025-56-street closure. This is a request to close 0.10 acres of mechanical drive, which is a town-maintained road. There are two impacted properties. The location is next to the intersection of Cameron Way and Shotwell Road. The existing use is vacant and undeveloped. So, street closure processes are outlined in the general statute 168-299, and I think this is your attachment number eight today in your package. A little bit of background to the project, so the Shotwell Apartments project was an approved conditional rezoning back in 2024. It was approved for a multifamily project, 100% of affordable houses apartment, about 90 units. In the conditions of approval of the project when it was approved back in 2024, condition 37 states that the developer shall cover the cost of any associated road improvements, and number eight pertains to the removal of the cul-de-sac. But alone, this condition does not constitute any approval, since this process is governed by state law. So in general, the abandonment of the cul-de-sac would help to integrate the project components, such as the driveway, the parking spaces, and the building itself, since they're all connected to each other. Currently, there's a site plan and CD application that Planning Department and Engineering Department approve, with the conditions that the cul-de-sac must be approved by town council. Is it, it is worth mentioning that the site plan and CD was reviewed by the TRC, and TRC also includes Fire and Public Works Departments. So, a plot was also given to the TRC for review, and this one will be recorded with Johnson County if approved, and this will finalize the street closure process. So, consideration tonight, there are two criteria in the general statute. One is closing of the street is in the best interest of the public, and number two, a landowner in the vicinity of the street will not be deprived of reasonable ingress or egress to their land. So tonight, we're making recommendation to town council, and staff recommendation is approval of this request. May you have any questions? We, the staff are here, and there is also the applicant that's are here tonight for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff or the applicant at this time?
I just have one real quick question. The, you said this was reviewed by fire, no issues with that, with turnarounds and fire trucks and all that, right? So no issues there, because it's, I'm, the only thing I'm worried about is people, obviously, first and foremost is the fire trucks being able to make the turns and everything. That's number one. But number two is people going down the end of that street and potentially having to make a turnaround on private property. So that's my only concern about this. That's it.
That's correct. If I can add to this, a sheet for, in the CDN site plan application was a sheet for the circulation of any fire trucks, and that was reviewed by Fire Department, and it was
Any further questions for staff? Mrs. Serasky will have your, your other question posed to the applicant, I suppose, about access in private property to do turnarounds. I don't know if the applicant would like to worry about that at all.
Yep, I can defer this question to the applicant that will explain more in details what the cul-de-sac removal entails in terms of security and just in general, what it entails.
So if you wouldn't mind addressing it briefly?
Certainly, and I'll be brief. Link Wilson, Wattsleaf Architects, based in Charlotte. And then I also have landscape architect Shane Herman from Kimley Horn, and also Chris Bostic from Kimley Horn to answer any questions. Perhaps we could go back to the abandonment diagram that we showed to the neighborhood meeting with the red dashes.
Do you have your presentation?
Uh, no, just yours is great. And it's been phenomenal working with staff here, my compliments to them as well. My client will be here for city council meeting. This diagram does show fire truck turnaround, and it does provide also access to the fitness center to the south, if someone were wanting to visit the fitness center using that access. But there is plenty of room on this private site for delivery, but also if somebody did come down and wish to turn around, they can turn around in the parking lot for the affordable housing project.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions of the applicant? Mr. Gleeson is recognized.
It would make me and probably Board Member Serasky feel better if you could just pay for the no outlet sign that could get installed at the end of the road. That's literally it.
We'd be very happy to do that. And we're also making a contribution for a number of other signs and for future signalization as well, part of the development.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, staff.
Thank you for your time.
Do we require a public comment for this case?
As a matter of, it is a public meeting, so you're open. You can have a public.
Are there any folks in the public that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period and turn it over to the board for deliberation and emotion at the appropriate time, which is now. Do we have a motion? You do not have it in the motion sheet in front of you. A simple statement of a motion to approve or to recommend approval, recommend denial would suffice.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Board Member Gleeson, and a second by Board Member Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Hearing none, the ayes have it, motion carries. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, 2024-140-CZM Flora Fusion Conditional Rezoning. Ms. Audrey Duchesne, Senior Planner, will be recognized.
Mr. Applewhite, I have to recuse myself. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Good evening, planning board again. Audrey Duchesne. So yes, that's my second presentation for tonight, the Flora Fusion Conditional Rezoning, project number 2024-140-CZM. Their request is to rezone a parcel from HID to CCI, which is conditional rezoning in this trail. The property size is about four acres, and the location is on Powton Road between Clayton Boulevard and NCRR Railroad. The existing use right now is undeveloped. This is a conditional rezoning type three under the UDO. The current zoning map shows HID, and then the proposed will be a conditional rezoning in this trail. A little bit of background, as you can see on this snippet, it's RLL, so approved conventional rezoning from RLL to HID was approved in 2023. So this parcel went from RLL to HID, and now we are here today for a conditional rezoning in this trail. There's also an annexation request in process for this parcel. So the applicant is requesting a deviation from the maximum permitted height in the district to accommodate a 100-foot distillation tower. The maximum permitted height right now in the district is 60 foot. Transportation policies design Powton Road as an 80-foot right-of-way, so there, there is a right-of-way dedication and the installation of a sidewalk to comply with the 80-foot street and street right-of-way. For any proposed deviation, the UDO provides enhancements. Those enhancements can be by landscaping, parking, or better architectural features, so better quality of parking, landscaping, or architectural features. The applicant choose to demonstrate a better, a type D instead of a type C buffer. The proposed use is heavy manufacturing, which is already permitted in HID, and will be permitted in CCI, too. As you can see on the map here with the future land use is Employment Center, which is pretty much all the area of Powton, and this allows some recycling and heavy manufacturing uses, and staff observation is that it is consistent.
Ms. Duchesne, one moment. We have a, a recusal by Board Member for, yeah.
I worked on that both Sunday. Recusal Ronald Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Understood.
And we're good with our quorum? We're still able to?
We do have six in the UDO. There is a minimum quorum of five members.
It looks like five. Sorry, Ms. Duchesne, you can continue.
No problem. Yes, so future land use is consistent, and, I mean, the project is consistent with the future land use. The conditions of approval, those are just the general ones, we just want to make sure to connect the concept plan to the condition. Here at condition number eight, this is the deviation that is requested by the applicant, so the 100 feet distillation tower that exceeds the UDO permitted height. And then condition number nine is the request of, I mean, the deviation from the UDO standards, but this time to satisfy the requested enhancements. So tonight, the consideration are, should the rezoning be approved, the council plan and associated conditions of approval would be tied to the land, and the planning board makes a recommendation to town council. Staff recommendation is to recommend approval, and it is consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. May you have any question for staff, and also applicants are here tonight?
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
Think about this site plan. Which part of this would have the distilling tower on it?
Oh, yeah, I can show you. I don't know if it's that clear, but I'm going this one here.
Any further questions for staff?
Derek. I don't know if this is, should be directed toward staff or applicant, but I remember in the background material, there was a radio tower that's in close proximity, and there was some conflict with signal or something. Was that ever resolved or worked out?
I know there's been some discussion, but I will let the applicant making sure that, to see where those discussions went.
Thank you.
We could recognize applicant.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Sanderson with Sanderson Engineering, 2485 Wendell Boulevard in Wendell. If you were on the planning board last year, this is deja vu, because this exact same, this, this project came before you in February. We talked about the distillation tower. We recycle refrigerants from air conditioning. And if you have had an air conditioner repaired or installed in Clayton anytime soon, you've used our product. In fact, I can guarantee you, this room uses it, because I'm about to freeze to death. But the, when we first started, when I first filled out the paperwork for application, it was under the old UDO. During halfway through the process, the new UDO was put in place, and the equivalent to I-2 was the HID. The project has not changed in any respect. We're still putting in the same tower that we were approved to put in then. We have proceeded with a considerable amount of work to accomplish our goal, and when a pre-application meeting was had between our contractor and staff in, I want to say, December, we were told that, wait a minute, under the new HID, the height restriction is a problem, there's not the exception that there was in the old UDO, and we need to go for a CCI zoning, or this says CZM zoning, in order to accomplish what we have already been approved for to do. And so that's why we're here back, is to get the paperwork right, the wording right, the whatever right you want to, you know, consider. But we have, as I said, there is nothing about it. The town council approved us in March of last year. The rezoning request, 2023-201-RZ, is on record, it's recorded in the courthouse. My client has employed me to apply for and get the annexation that also will come up to council in next month. Brown's Environmental Group has been employed to get a wetland except, or wetland jurisdictional determination on the wetlands that are on the project. The, I know that that was a question by someone on, on the planning board, so I will just go ahead and address it. There are, there are wetlands under the building on Phase Two that you can see that the little hatch mark. Those were created 100 years ago. When did the railroad come through? Basically, water is blocked from flowing onto the railroad, because the railroad has been raised over the years, and the railroad bed is higher. It is not jurisdictional. We have paperwork in hand from the Corps of Engineers. If you follow anything about land development, there was a Supreme Court that talked about non-jurisdictional wetlands. It took us almost, it took us many, many months to get the Corps of Engineers to even address it, but we can do as we need to in order to develop that property as far as the wetlands. So Brown's Environmental Group has been done. We've been, we've employed Jacobs Engineering to design the tower. The design of that has been brought from another company that was working with us previously to North Carolina to a company that is here, because we wanted to do everything local. Terricon has done the geotechnical review for both the building and the tower, because it takes a considerable amount of foundation to hold that tower up. 100 feet of steel in the air is a considerable amount of weight, so a lot of work has gone into that. Our contractor, GNG Builders, has been employed and contracts have been signed for them to build what we want to build, and they are the ones in making their supplemental to the Town of Clayton, found out the clerical circumstance that we are in.
So, excuse me, sorry. So this was the same project that we saw last year?
100% same project. It was approved.
Nothing dramatically has changed over the course of that time?
Just for a point of clarification, that was a conventional rezoning, so there was no associated project with that, even though there was an intent to build that.
And so he, he brought forward what was going to be the product that they expected, but this will be a tailored conditional request.
Yeah, because, mostly because of that distillation tower exceeding the height for the HID zone district.
Okay. But just to clarify, that means the tower was not part of the approval last year? It was.
Correct, yeah. Last year's approval was just for the rezoning.
Okay, so that's the difference. Okay.
I don't understand your question.
It was, it was a clarifying question for staff about what exactly was the, the subject of the rezoning request for last year and this year. But I do want to open it up for questions from the board, if you're okay with that. Sure. And Ms. Hooker, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'm still a little con-
Yeah, I'm still a little confused. Was the, so the tower was included in the approved?
It was discussed. We talked about what it was that we wanted to do and why we wanted a heavy industrial zoning instead of a light industrial zoning.
Right.
Because under the old, under the old ordinance that the paperwork was filled out from, it needed to be heavy industrial to build the tower. And the question was, well, everybody else around you was light industrial, why can't you do that? Well, we couldn't build the tower, the purpose of what we were doing under that. So it was discussed, but under a straight rezoning without condition, there does not need to be a site plan drawn to submit with it. You just say, you know, what's listed under your approved uses, we're going to be one of those, and that's what the board approved.
Right. And so you didn't have the question of the tower interfering with the broadcasting tower?
Well, we have had discussion with the radio tower people. We were first contacted from them in December of last year when we were about to have our neighborhood meeting. They contacted the owner to let them know that they're next door and they see this as a problem. We have had discussion with them and also know that they purchased their site in June of last year after we were rezoned to be able to build what we want to build.
Okay.
Okay? And so if the ordinance had not changed in the interim, we would be under construction right now. But we have had conversation with them to the extent of offering to purchase their tower for a 25% profit from what they had purchased it a mere six months before, and they won't, they've not engaged further from that other than some, I'm trying to come up with the right word, ancillary discussion, but no hard numbers and no detailed discussion about how to move forward. And so we're not against having conversations with them about that, but we are adamant about moving forward with our project. Our project is needed for not just us. What we, what this does in refining, breaking down, and recycling refrigerants is unique. Clayton is, you wouldn't know it because of the industry and what this does, but if you have work done on your air conditioner, something has to happen to that refrigerant. Instead of storing it, whatever, my client takes it, breaks it down to its individual chemical components, and then makes new refrigerant from it. So we recycle refrigerant like our, if you know anything about refrigerant, years ago it was called R22. Now it's called anything else. You can't make R22, you can't have R22. If you've got it, you have to get a new system. But that R22 still exists. We break it down into its individual pieces and put it back into new refrigerant so that those chemicals aren't lost and it's not released into the atmosphere. Did I answer your question more?
Yes, but for point of clarification, the people that own the radio antenna and radio tower, there's concerns, but there's no documented problem.
We have, we have offered, let me read this, because I don't want to misquote this statement. My client has told their representative that we would share in the cost of an AM radio frequency assessment, and we're willing to explore the possibility of purchasing their property. Nothing has come from that, and that was in December of last year. It's now July. We can't make them talk to us.
And under the old code, you were approved or you could have moved forward, like you said, again, for clarification.
We would be under construction right now with the old code. We have everything in, you know, we were presenting, we were ready to present our site plan work, and we found out we had to go from site plan back to a concept plan in order to get a conditional zoning approved. Yeah.
Are there further questions, Mr. Gleason?
Just a simple one. With the nature of the chemicals and this being in a relatively close proximity to the road, is there any need, does there need to be any sort of design for crash walls?
Yes, the circle that's there, you see the circle that's around the site? That is required by the town's code that this thing has to, if it ever fail, it has to land on our site, and that's what that circle represents.
Any further questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this? You can come forward. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and your address, please, sir.
I am Michael Carbone. I represent Truth Broadcasting. We are at the 3700 block of Powden Road, but we're based in Winston-Salem. I've come up from Winston-Salem. I'm glad I did because some of the statements that have been made here are inaccurate, and I have my laptop here so I can show you communications back and forth between us and the company where we did talk directly about pricing, and also we talked about the tower and how all this would operate. So he may not be privy to all that or understand all that, and I came out to visit them also. We don't want to be hostile to them. We're trying to work something out with them, but there is no doubt that even at 60 feet, that distillation tower is going to be a problem for our signal, and to go to 100 feet will be a big problem for us. It sits on the property towards, going towards Raleigh from our tower. So the part of our signal that'll be most impeded will be towards Raleigh, which is the population center, which reduces the value of our station dramatically because we'll no longer have a pop count, a large pop count under signal for us. So we have talked a little bit about relocating. There's another tower in Clayton that we might be able to get on that belongs to a church, WHPY, and we've talked to them and visited their site. And, you know, we're, like I said, it looks cool. The recycling project looks great, but it is a problem for us. They did offer to buy the property, but that doesn't address our business enterprise, right? If you buy the property, you knock our tower down, and then we have no business left. So we need to get, address our business purpose as well as, as well as the property itself. And, you know, we made some strides forward toward that, and I do have probably 20 email back and forth in here between myself and Brad and some of the folks in, you know, at Floor Fusion, and I did come out and visit with them. So we'd like to be able to work it out, but definitely 100 feet is going to be a problem for us. You're trying to send your amplitude signal through this giant piece of metal that's going to be maybe 200 feet from your tower. So that's a struggle for us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak on this case? Hearing none will close the public comment, and we will turn it over to the board for deliberation and for a motion. Again, the motion and consistency statements are before you with the staff recommendation in red. Any comments from the board?
Just for, yeah, just for clarification, I think I heard that this was brought up before and was approved, but it was approved without the tower. Is that true?
Steph?
Yes, that's correct. So the rezoning back in 2024 was a conventional rezoning, so nothing about the project was approved. So only the conversion of the district.
So the tower wasn't approved nor the height. So we got the tower not approved, and we're also trying to determine tonight whether to approve something going from 60 to 100 feet.
That's correct.
So there's two, two issues here. I see.
Can I add a clear, or a question of clarification? So it was a conventional zoning under the old district that would have been a permitted use to have the distillation tower in the conventional zone. And with that, he would have been able to develop his property, and then we adopted a new ordinance. And I think that's where it's getting a little fuzzy for the board to understand why he had to come back for another rezoning request.
So, yeah, there were no permitted maximum height. And so when the UDO came in with the HID district, we had a max, yeah, maximum permitted height of 60 foot. And this is the only deviation that is requested and the only concerns for tonight. So the conventional rezoning was only to convert the districts.
Yeah, the tower itself was a permitted use under the old district.
HID, yes.
HID for 60 feet, and now this is a modification request to go up to 100 feet.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. It is late this evening, and I know we're all feeling that. Are there other comments from the board or questions for staff? I got one comment. I'm still a little concerned about the fall zones, both with the radio tower and this tower. I mean, I understand it's going to fall on site, but it's also going to fall into a building, which could also throw, you know, throw it off-site. So I thought, do we have, is there anything in our ordinance that says you can build buildings within the fall zone of something this tall?
Yes, there is nothing related to the building, just the property lines.
Okay, so the fall zone just to the property, okay.
That's correct.
Because I, correct me if I'm wrong, but general radio towers, I thought you couldn't build anything within the fall zone of a radio tower.
I'll need to verify that, but I think property line was the only concerns for fall zones.
Okay. Because I'm also concerned if the radio tower that's behind this falls, it's going to fall onto their property. It's close enough. So is that not a concern for anyone? Maybe that's my question? Other comments from the board or a motion, the motion sheet is before you, and if you need to ask clarifying questions, you can do that as well. If the, the change from 60 to 100 feet requires the request, I understand that. I guess the challenge that I think I'm having and the board may be having as well is now there is a new adverse impact to surrounding property owners because of the changes within the past several months, which I think I can speak for myself or probably others on the board. That's a unique and a unique wrinkle to this case that was not the case last year when we approved this project originally or recommended approval to town council. So I can understand the, the challenge of making a motion one way or the other, but recall the, the motion statements you have in front of you, the policies from the land use, or the comprehensive land use plan, the ordinance, and the request before us in consideration of any motion. Can I ask one more question of the applicant? If the applicant would like to answer, of course. Has there been any studies by you all that shows proof that you are blocking signal and that would affect, that would adversely affect the business?
That's what it is that we offered to help to pay for, but nothing has been done because we have to work with them to do it. And I want to clarify something that I've heard that in talking about the 100-foot tower. The 100-foot tower was approved for use under the old, under the old zoning. There was a 60-foot height, but as long as you were so far according to the code, as long as you were, basically the fall fell inside of your property, it could be taller because we've gone through this at two different sites. So it's not, we're asking or having to ask because of the change of the code, and we got caught in the middle of it to ask it for today. But under what was approved in March of last year, we were headed to construction when we were told by staff, wait a minute, things are different. We found another spot in the code of this 800 pages or whatever it is, and we have to back up and get everything squared away for you. And I'm sorry, did I properly answer your question for you?
Again, I think what I'm struggling with is, is that there's an adverse, I get it, I get that you could have built the tower under the old code and you have to come back and do this, okay? We're, we are bound by going, using the current UDO on our decision-making process. So what it says the old code, I don't care. Doesn't matter. So I care about the new code and how this works in the new code. What I want to know is, has there been a study of an adverse effect on the neighbor's property, whether you've talked to them or not, or if anywhere there's been an agreement or not, will this 100-foot tower adversely affect the radio tower and their, and their signal and the ability to get their signal to, to a pop, to the population? Yes or no? It's a simple, pretty simple question.
The answer is no. I'm Brad Kivlin. I'm one of the owners of Floor Fusion. I live at 2008 Beaver Drive here in Clayton. We've not done a study. We discussed that. We offered to help pay for a study, help pay for, purchase the property, help pay for moving the tower. Our last meeting was back in January. He came to our, our headquarters, and we had a discussion about that and left the meeting with, hey, let's work together, just give me some numbers, tell me what the number is, how can I help? And it's been radio silence. So I don't know how to do a study. I would rely on them to do a study, but I can't get anything back, right? I don't know how to even approach that. So we offered to help, we offered to move forward, had the conversation, but never got any communication back to do anything. So your answer is no, no study.
But not for lack of trust.
But not for lack of trust.
I'm Danny, I'm Danny Howell with Real Engineering, engineer record with the new CZI rezoning. We, we did the, the concept plan that you see before you today. He meant, Mr. Carbone mentioned in his thing, too, that 60 feet, a 60-foot tower would impact, potentially impact his AM signal, potentially impact his AM signal. So again, our building, our 30-foot building can impact that signal. So there's, you know, we have to be able to develop our site. Right now, we could put 20 60-foot tall towers on the site. We're proposing one 100-foot tower on the site, which again is the sole reason for this use was that tower. And I have exhibits from our last rezoning, which was again, a general rezoning, not a, not a conditional rezoning. But we have an exhibit, we have an exhibit with the building and the tower location shown, renderings that were shown to the board at that time, and we've not changed anything from the plan, the site plan from our original submittal. I agree, there's no concept. And when we were coming through the first time with rezoning from RLL, sorry, RLL to HID, the adjacent property is the, the tower, the Truth, Truth Broadcasting. They have a 150 to 200-foot tower. I'm not quite sure of the number, but they got, they have LID, and they had a special use permit to get that tower. And under the old code, that was exactly what we were going to be doing is rezoning, and I think there was a special use permit that allowed for that additional height, and that's what's been removed from the, from the code. So therefore, here we are again, after coming in for a site plan that we were ready to do the tower, now we're, we're going back to rezoning to go from the 60-foot to the 100-foot. So that's the background and history that I know and why we placed it where we did on the site with the fall. And again, with what Mike had asked earlier, the tower structures can be within that fall radius. Again, it's just an accessory structure, just like the building. Any building can fall, any tower can fall. So again, accessory structures can be, you know, within each other, but that fall zone again, doesn't cross any property lines and definitely stays out of any public right-of-ways for sure. You can see we've set it further back into the site for that very reason, to keep it away from any public, you know, just in case for catastrophic. But same way with the way they cited the, the Truth Tower on the adjacent property. And again, our exhibit shows it. We added the tower so you could see that location to our actual concept plan. This is not it. Our concept plan shows the Truth Tower in relation to our site as well, so you could kind of see, as transparency to see all of that that was going on, so.
Thank you.
And again, I do have, I do have that exhibit that we shared, the rendering that we shared with, I have it with me if you guys. But again, that was part of the, the original rezoning, similar to tonight, how they showed several layouts and renderings during their rezonings. This was also shown during your, the previous approval. But again, it hasn't changed. It was 100-foot tower then, and it's, it shows the building, the location, it shows a 3D rendering of where everything is located on the site. It's really a great visual, but if that would help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board or emotion? Conrad, I'm gonna ask just a very basic clarifying question for myself here. Had we not adopted a new UDO, would we, would they have to come back here for any approval by planning board or town council?
So the, the, the property was zoned residential large, it was RLL. It would not have been allowed to do any industrial uses.
And that was the original rezoning before last year.
So the original rezoning, they submitted in 2023. And that allowed them to have permit choice. They could have continued under the UDC. Had they provided us a project that we would have been under review with the site plan, for instance, or a combo site plan, construction drawings prior to the 2024 effective date of the UDO. The UDC has an allowance for HID to have a, a height of up to 100 foot. It does allow that in the HID, but their property was not zoned HID at that time. So they proceeded with a conventional rezoning. And what that means is that you don't have any opportunity to provide exhibits, to provide any projects. Now, you can provide that for illustrative purposes, but your, the decision is not tied legally to anything other than just a change of, from the yellow to the purple or whatever magenta color we have. And I want to, my memory is, is my memory is that we we had this discussion with the applicants, not, not to try to relive some, some discussions that occurred, but I want to say that staff was providing this information to the applicants, but the decision was to provide a conventional rezoning. And it was a concern that with the project, we want to make sure as staff that what you're rezoning it to is what you want to, what you're going to want to use the property for, what you can do the property for, provided the standards are in effect at the time of your submittal. So there's a lot of discussion about the UDC, the UDO, and to the point of the board, the, the ordinance that's in effect of right now is what is the consideration. Right now, you have a consideration that is a conditional rezoning. The, there is a, and it's really because of the height and the UD, the UDC did allow it, but you had to have been under the HID zone district, and this property was not an HID zone district. It was RL, it was what was now RLL. So really, the board tonight, you all have the decision to make that is the conditional rezoning before you as presented by staff. And I would advise the board to make a motion based on the materials before you this evening.
Thank you, sir. You can just provide your name.
My name is Dave Gusho. I'm also one of the owners. I've been making these type of assets my whole life, right? So I've got a lot of patents on this technology. I built these assets before. You dig them down the bedrock, they never fall, right? So falling over of an asset like this is never happened. We do a great job on the geotech, but one of the keys that I was talking to Nova Nordisk about, excuse me, in the beginning, was eventually in the town of Clayton, you have big pharmaceutical companies. You will have fractionation towers around it. One of the biggest needs that Novo had when they came to our planning meeting was, hey, can you fractionate for us at this site? I said, well, we can. Can we use the waste steam? How it typically works on a big pharma or chemical sites, this is a pharma-grade column. What you can do is they would take waste steam from their process, you drive a column and take the connoisseur back. I didn't want to do that because I wanted it to be closed loop because I don't see these assets here. You see them in Ohio, you see them in Texas, but you don't see them here in the state of North Carolina. We wanted to build this technology here. We think it's the technology of the future that you need for not only pharmaceutical applications. I think that we're an economic development center in Clayton, technology that does not exist around anywhere in the world. I would, we would love to work with the gentleman back there, help him relocate the tower or his tower because that tower is probably the odd man out in the state of, in, in the city of Clayton for this type of development work. So that's all we have when you're doing the development. And I know that we've been working on this for seemingly years, and we'd like to build the tower. We'd like to build it in North Carolina. Our bill, our company has basically maxed out with what we can do. It's one of the restricting technologies. And we'd love to build it in, in North Carolina. So.
Thank you, sir. With the information before, if you have the rendering before you, we do need to make a, a motion. So I'll leave it to the board to make the motion. You have four before you? Unless there are any other clarifying questions?
I make a motion, motion number one, recommend approval consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. Make a motion to recommend approval of the Flora Fusion Conditional Rezoning, the associated concept plan in conditions of approval based on consistency with the goals, policies, and/or strategies of the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan in that property is designated in the future land use map as employment center. Goal LU1 preserves Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU1.3 encourages non-residential land uses in areas consistent with the future land use map. Policy LU1.4 encourages new businesses and new residential development in employment centers designated on the future land use map. Goal ED1 increases opportunities for companies that provide well-paid jobs. Policy ED1.2 preserves and develops prime industrial land for employment growth. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan encourages non-residential uses in this area and requests is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion by Board Member Hall, a second by Board Member Hooker. Any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. No. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Sheriff Applewhite, just for the record, do you know who one, so there was five, five votes in favor, one vote against?
Correct. For any of the board members that need to take a break, you can do it on your own time. We're gonna plow through the rest of the agenda here. We're moving on to our next item, 2025-53-RZ Clayton North PSC rezoning with presenter Mr. Robert Tate. Welcome to the town of Clayton as a senior planner. We're happy to have you.
All right. Good evening, Planning Board. Robert Tate, Senior Planner. Tonight before you have two items, so hopefully we can get through these pretty quickly. They are two conventional rezonings. The first is 2025-52-RZ Clayton Southwest Public Safety Center. As I mentioned, this is a condition, conventional rezoning going from office institutional to public facilities. The property.
Mr. Tate, just for clarification, on our agenda, this is item number, or item G. So we're doing item G, and then we'll do item F as the way he's presenting it for clarification of the board. You can continue.
Continue, okay.
Yes, sir.
So like I mentioned, this property is approximately eight acres in size, situated along the southernly side of Veterans Parkway, north of the intersection with Short Johnson Road, with the site address of 1609 Veterans Parkway. Currently, the site is vacant and partially wooded. So here's just a quick overlay aerial image of the post noted for the site. As I mentioned, this is a conventional request going from office institutional to public facilities. I'd like to note that the purpose for rezoning the site is to facilitate a future development of a public safety center by the town. So here, showing the future land use map designation currently, it is medium density residential with a neighborhood center overlay. So this would be consistent with the future land use map and is also consistent with relevant growth plan policies. So moving pretty quick, this request staff is recommending approval. And before you are four motions, staff, like I mentioned, recommends approval of this item. And I am available for any questions before you hear from the town as the applicant.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Hall.
What emergency services will be located here? Will it be fire, police, and rescue or what?
From my understanding, it's fire and police, but I can have staff also elaborate more.
Yeah, town staff will be able to speak to other town staff.
But I'm getting some head knots, so it sounds like fire and police.
Other questions for planning staff specific?
I have a quick question. When, when we were going through UDO changes, remember us talking about what could be done within the PUB district? And it seemed like there were very little things you couldn't do in a PUB district, according to it. So I just want to make sure that we're not, we're, what, do we need to hear detail? Like, do we know building heights and all that kind of stuff, or is that something that's beyond this?
So the recently approved Unified Town Ordinance Tax Amendments did include an expansion of uses allowed as a use by right in the PUB district? And what you would consider a reduction in the setback and, and that's the, the district standards. So to allow for a building to be closer to the property line, a little bit higher, some more flexibility with the design. So those, those revisions that were approved on Monday was of last week would be applicable to this district and for any structures coming in. So, so the town could put, the intent is for it to be a fire station, police station, but it could be anything technically that is allowed in that district.
Again, for the clarification, this is a conventional rezoning, so anything on that list of uses can be allowed as opposed to what we've been hearing are conditional rezonings, which allow for specific conditions and specific items. Questions, Mr. Hall?
I'm just curious, this, the, the case we're gonna hear after this one. I understand that location, this location for me. I'm trying to understand the rhyme and reason for this specific location because it does seem to be very closely located to the existing fire station and police department that's in town. I mean, it seems like it's probably like a mile away. So is that just the best available option for the facility or is there some thing about that specific site, this ideal for emergency services?
Sure. So I think planning may not be the appropriate venue for that discussion, so I'll let fire.
David Raines, Fire Chief. And so this facility is based on a four-minute response time, which we have adopted. So this is the most ideal place of, out of all the property along Veterans Parkway, this was the most ideal place for this fire station to maintain a four-minute response time.
Mr. Chief, if you wouldn't mind, could you speak? Could you speak to the importance of response times and how it goes into ratings and other things like that?
Well, response times equate to outcomes, right? And so when we talk about outcomes, we talk about house fires, we talk about cardiac arrest, we talk about sage, we talk about confining the fire to the object of origin, room of origin, floor of origin, building of origin. And so I like to, I like to quantify response times come down to seconds. And seconds equate to a positive outcome or negative outcome. So if it's you and your family member who's, who's laying on the floor without a heartbeat, do you want me there in 60 seconds or you want me there in, in five minutes? Right? That's what it comes down to. How quick, how quick do we start CPR? How quick can we defibrillate your heart to get your heart back? Fire, how quick can we get fire on the wall, water on the fire? How quick can we pull your loved ones out of the building? It's all about that response piece. And the quicker we get there, the quicker the positive outcomes occur.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
We have another question, Mr. Felice.
Has the, has, has discussions happened with the design team for the Veterans Parkway widening?
We have schematic designs already of the facility.
So they're incorporating that into your response times, make sure you can cross the median and everything.
Yep, we've already got a tentative agreement with the new superhighway coming in, the DOT, to allow, to allow a mountable median to go out of there and go left.
Mr. Carter, just a quick question. I'm curious, the location of this facility, will it give you that four-minute response time for the far western extremes of the, the town limits? I'm just curious.
Well, the town limits do not go beyond what I believe is the hospital copper district area. So yeah, we're all over top of that. Really, this is going to help us as the town grows more. And on our I-42 response, this is going to help us meet that response. Okay. Because, because right now, our, our heaviest call volume is out at the assisted livings, 204 Dairy Road, Spring Brook and all that. Right now, from downtown, it's an eight-minute response time. Our goal is five minutes at the 90th percentile. This is killing us out here right now for that response. Because we run a lot of calls out there every day.
Okay. And one follow-up question. Vehicle maintenance, it will not be done at this facility?
No, no, this is, this is a shared facility between fire and police. And so it's, it would be a three-bay fire station, two stories in design. And it will, once it's built, it'll house an engine company and a rescue, heavy rescue company or an engine company and a ladder company.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have an idea on response all the way to, from Veterans Parkway to Cornwallis, if there is expansion?
Well, so that's in the future, we know, but that, that's within our four-minute response time, Cornwallis. The other caveat there, Roddy, is in the county, is Cleveland Fire Department has a station right across the street. But by general statute, we're responsible for fire protection in Clayton town limits. So when that comes in the future, we'll have to figure that out.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any further questions for town staff, including fire?
Thank you.
Hearing none. We'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this case? Hearing none, we'll turn it over to the board for deliberation. You have the motions before you. Again, this is 2025-52 rezoning, but I believe the, the statements are before you. I'll entertain a motion by the board.
I'll do the motion. Recommend approval of consent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. Move to make the motion recommended approved of the Clayton Southwest PSC conventional rezoning based on consistency with the future land use map, goals, policies, and other strategies. And the adopted 2045 Cohensive Growth Plan in that goal LU1 serves Clayton's character while allowing the growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU1-3 encourages non-resident land uses and areas consistent with the future land use map. Goal S1, SL1, invest in utilities and structure that supports land use patterns envisioned by the future land use map. This action is reasonable and in public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan strives to ensure the capacity of emergency services as the populations grows.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Board Member Williams, a second by Board Member McCurney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Hearing none, motion carries. And we will move on to the final item, 2025-53-RZ Clayton North, PSC rezoning. Mr. Robert Tate is recognized.
All right. Good evening again, Planning Board. Robert Tate, Senior Planner with the town. So this is 2025-53-RZ, another conventional rezoning for the Clayton North Public Safety Center. This request would go from the Residential Plan Development District to public facilities. The property is approximately acres in size, situated along the westernly side of Coverbridge Road, at the intersection of Club Connection Boulevard, across from Loop Road, with the site address of 119 Club Connection Boulevard. The site is currently vacant and has a pond on it. Here is an aerial image of the site with the posted notice location. Here, looking at the current zoning and proposed zoning, so going from that residential plan development to public facilities. And I'd like to note that this site specifically, or this parcel specifically, was once part of the Walton Farm at Riverwood Athletic Club, but was recently purchased by the town to facilitate the development of a public safety center. Here, looking at the future land use map currently, it has a low-density residential designation. So this request would be inconsistent with that designation. So an approval of this request would result in an automatic amendment of the future land use map to low-density residential, but with a neighborhood center overlay. So staff is recommending approval for this request. And here are your four motions. Staff is highlighting the second motion for recommendation of approval because it's inconsistent with the future land use map. So this will result, like I mentioned, in an automatic amendment of the future land use map if approved. And I'm available for any questions you have.
Just for clarification with the board, it doesn't seem we have a motion consistency statement for this project, but use the same document we used for the last one, and it'll be item two. It's not in red for this project, but that would be the recommended motion by the town. Well, maybe I don't have it, or I can't find it. So I'm speaking for myself. A lot of papers over here.
Scared me a little bit.
No, no, you're fine. You did a great job. Questions for planning staff? Mr. McCurney.
Does this facility have EMS? Is there a reason why? And the reason I'm asking is you've got Carolina overlook with a 55-plus community. It's going to be about 1,200, 1,300 homes.
Yes, sir. So, yeah. One, just to make sure everybody's clear on this, EMS is a county function, it's not a town function. And on both of these, on both of these projects, we reached out to Johnston County EMS to gauge their interest in placing a unit in both of these facilities. And these facilities did not meet their model for response and what they needed, so they declined to offer.
Uh, as a follow-up question, when you get a ambulance request, does the fire department send a vehicle?
Yes, sir. It depends on the, the coding that 911 uses. And if it's a Bravo or higher level call, yes, the fire department goes because we're all certified as EMTs. So we get, and, and usually we're there before EMS a lot of times. And so it just depends on the code. If it's, if it's a less, you know, it's an alpha level call, then they just send EMS by themselves.
Thank you.
Any further questions for planning staff or fire? I'll, I'll just make a quick comment that it's unfortunate that St. Johnston County did not respond to an opportunity to protect residents in Clayton and beyond with both of these sites. I just think that's notable.
Well, I think if you look at it with their downtown station here, they run multiple units out of that. If you call Cornwallis Road, they have a unit in there. And they have a unit in Northside Station. So they've got it triangulated for Clayton where they'd be, and this is why these two locations didn't work out.
Okay. Well, we'll feel safe knowing that y'all are showing up to save our lives. I appreciate that. Any further questions for staff? There's, there's also, there also could potentially be 167-unit complex that is going to also get used at this. Hearing no further questions. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Please state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
I won't take your three minutes, that's for sure. My name is Johnny House. I live at 2975 Coverbridge Road, Clayton, right beside y'all. And what are y'all's boundaries? Zoning buffers?
For the sake of your time, if you have more comments, we'll have them figure that out, and then we can-
Well, I mean, I thought that's what we were going to be talking about tonight. That's why I came.
Staff, do you have any?
I know you got the residential because we're already dealing with it on the backside of Walton Farm there.
Are you referring to landscape buffers, the buffer requirements for the site? Robert is looking that up right now.
I'm not opposed to the site.
Yeah, for the, for the sake of public comment, are there any specific items you want to mention to the board during your time, or you just had that, that question?
I've already had conversations with him.
Perfect.
I was just looking to see what the buffer zone was for.
Okay.
So it would appear that on the, the town site, that there will be a type A separational buffer, which would be a 10-foot width buffer, requiring four under-story trees and 15 shrubs per 100 linear feet.
Thank you, sir. That's a type A buffer, so that's a least intense buffer.
So no, it would not be consistent with the Walton Farm buffer?
So Walton Farm was approved as a plan development under the UDC. That required a Class C buffer, which was more intensive. It had a requirement for fence, opaque barrier that got to be six foot tall, and that was required for all plan developments. So it would not be the same as that buffer.
It would not be.
No.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comments? Hearing none. We'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and turn it back over to the board for the deliberation. You all have the motions in front of you. And you can make the motion at the appropriate time, or you'd have additional discussion.
One thing to note, real quick, so looking at the compatibility table for the buffer requirements, PUB to PDR, which would be CZR under the UDO, is actually a Class C buffer. It's not to the same standards as the UDC's Class C buffer, but it is a Class C instead of a Class A, just to clarify.
Thank you. Before the, the motion is made, I think it's worth noting that I think when these kind of facilities are next to neighborhoods, I think the town will take the care to make sure that they're not sounding the alarms as they drive out of the, the property and disrupting the neighbors, trying to use lights only when, when possible and other things. So with that, I'll turn it to the board for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to recommend approval of the Clayton North PSC Conventional Rezoning. While the proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan in that goal SI1 invests in utility infrastructure that supports land use patterns envisioned by the future land use map. It is inconsistent in that the property is designated as low-density residential in the future land use map, and residential is not a permitted use of the proposed district. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan strives to ensure the capacity of emergency services as the population grows, and the rezoning would permit uses that allow for expansion of these services.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Carter, a second by Board Member Williams. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thighs have it. Motion carries. All right. With that, we will move to the final stages of the agenda. Is there any new business?
There's no new business.
No new business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn if there are no other comments by the board.
I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Hall, a second by Board Member Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Thighs have it. Motion carries. We are adjourned.